Okay. All right, now that we solved traffic problems here. Good evening, this is a meeting of the Lemmonster School Committee. It is 5:00 PM, we are here at Apple Seeds. And it's a meeting of the School Committee, well, Stan, join me in salute to the flag. All right, we'll open up the public forum session in the meeting, would anyone like to address the committee? If so, just come forward with your name for the record, please. Once again, in case you're trying to get through the crowds, I'll give you another minute. One last time, if not, we'll close this portion of the meeting. Tracy. By the way, Tracy, you've done outstanding job, I'd like to thank you. An event that we leave here in chaos tonight and all run off to do what was due to finish the day. I'd just like to thank you, you kept us focused and with myself and a few other members, that's very helpful. I'm not going to speak for anybody, but for me, it was very helpful. All right, come on up, make yourself comfortable. Adjust the chair wherever you want, you can stand, you can, whatever makes you comfortable.
I think I'll sit.
Same as last time. This is a little more cozy, I think, than the original interviews.
Well, we were sixteen people.
So it was, it was large.
We were sixteen people, like. Yeah. All right. I guess I get the first question. Okay. All right, how would you work to become part of the Lemmonster community in supporting our school district?
First, if I could say, thank you for having me here, I'm very excited to be here and honored to be a finalist. Again, enthusiastic about the opportunity. I think I do a number of things to be part of the Lemmonster community. The first thing I would do is I would hit the ground, learning. I think the goal would be to learn about the community, learn about the schools, learn about the relationships with the city and the school, school department. I would just get out there to every event that I could, you know, I would go to local churches, make connections with police and fire, meet with every principal, if I were offered the job within the first week, week or two. I know coming in in July is a weird time because everybody goes on vacation. I would also, I think, just try to meet as many people as I could, get the perspective of the parents, get to, you know, learn what the civic groups are in town and connect with them. You know, connect with the city council, meet with you, meet with the school committee members, I think really just, really get to know the community and make myself available. In Milford, where I'm currently the superintendent, I've had an open door policy. And I would continue that as Lemmonster superintendent, and I would make myself available to any community member that wanted to speak with me.
Okay, if I went down into the Stop and Shop in Milford, and that was you and I was pushing my carriage through the store, would people recognize me?
Absolutely, so I get, I get a lot of questions when I'm, when I'm out at either a restaurant or shopping or, I used to do a local TV show called Talk Soup, S U P E. And, you know, I would sometimes play instruments, and I'm not a musician, kids would teach me how to play an instrument and somebody would say, hey, I saw you, and it was terrible.
You can get away with that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, Greg is our next question.
Hi, how would you work to, how would you approach the district's desire to improve and maintain high academic achievement? How would you sustain access to advanced coursework?
Yeah, I think when I, when I visited the, the district, I was able to get to, I think, nearly every school. And I think a lot of what's happening in Lemmonster, I think we're doing in Milford, we just adopted a lot of sort of mathematics, so I'm very familiar with that program. You have an early college pathway and we're very, we're very engaged with the early college programming, so I think that's critically important. One of my goals is always to make sure, let me answer the second part first, and I'll talk about the first part a little bit more. Is to make sure that every student, if they, if they so desire, has, have access to the highest level courses. So whether it's advanced placement, early college courses, I know you do Project Lead the Way pathways in the schools, but I think making that access available, the ability for students that they don't get like, put on a particular track, they have, they have an opportunity to kind of, you know, move up and take the most rigorous coursework that they can have. In terms of, in terms of improving and maintaining high academic achievement, I, I think what I would do again, I think it goes back to the first question about just, just learning what's happening, learning what's going well, finding out where some of the challenges are. And in working with, you know, the administration, working with the central office team, and kind of building on the plans that are already in place. I think the goal isn't to come in and say, we're going to do it the McIntyre way. I think we really need to do it the Lemmonster way, I think that's critically important. The, the other thing I think that's, that's equally important, it was impressive when I was here, is I had lunch in this room and unfortunately it was on a Monday when the Apple Seeds was closed, we had pizza, it was good pizza, but the next day I think it was fried chicken and waffles, which sounded fantastic.
Timing is everything.
It is, it is. You couldn't have scheduled me on a Tuesday. But I think the career and technical education programs here are phenomenal. And it sounds like the demand, from what I could tell by talking to the administrators of the program here, you know, there's, there's more demand for the seats than there are seats there. And I think, you know, how do, how do we, how do we approach that, both from an academic perspective and a CTE perspective? And one of, one of the things we're looking at in Milford is, we just got approved for a new high school project, we're about to enter the eligibility period. And we're really focused on adding CTE program, we have some, but we're part of kind of a vocational school, like a regional vocational school, but we have a lot of students that would benefit from that programming and, and that's something we're really looking at. So that's something that, that I would like to see. The, the other thing I would say is, you know, one thing that we forget about, you know, when we talk about like academic progress, I think that's critically important. You look at NCAS scores, you look at SATs, ACTs, AP scores, access for you, all those things that are kind of measures of how we're doing as a, as a school district. We also have to look at where, what are students doing after graduation, how are we getting them there? And, you know, one thing that, that I think is so important is finding out what's, what students are passionate about. And how do we get them to kind of engage in their passion? You know, if someone's passionate about woodworking, you know, we have a program here, if someone's passionate about the arts, what, what things do we have that will get them to where they need to go? And I know about, you know, two thirds of the students who graduate from Lemmonster are going on to either four or two year colleges, and about a third are going directly into the workforce or the military. And for the students going directly into the military, how do we, or I'm sorry, directly into the workforce, how do, how do we, how do we kind of ensure that they're not going to like minimum wage jobs? How are we ensuring that they're doing something that's got long-term potential? That leads to like a lucrative career? And the students that are heading to college, you know, what are we doing to support them through that process? What are we doing to make sure that they're making an informed choice, the right choice? You know, because a lot of students get to college and they don't quite know what they're going to do. And thirty or forty years ago, if college was $5,000 a year, you'd go for seven years and not be a doctor and it was okay. Now, when, you know, tuition in private schools can run up to eighty-five or ninety thousand dollars, it's important at the high school level that we really prepare students to make informed choices about what they're doing at the college level. One of my strategies tonight is to give mediocre answers because I know there's two more candidates coming and I don't want them to build on what,
Oh, it's okay.
Build on, build on what I'm saying. But, but I think again, you work, you're, you're working with the team in place, you're building on what's happening. And you're making sure that we're creating the correct pathways and support for students to kind of get to where they want to go, because that's really what we're ultimately about. Thank you.
You can't hear us?
I'm going to move the mic closer, how's that, is it on?
We're competing with the,
That's, 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 is that better?
We're competing with the air conditioning.
It's distracting to watch myself give the answers. Because I'm,
Stop looking.
Just drawn to that picture.
Pay no attention to that man on the screen. All right, next question is from Mr. Hall, Mr. Ron Hall.
Evening, Kevin.
Good evening.
Please speak to the needs of adult learners and how you work to address them. Had that conversation in the last meeting.
Are you talking about like the faculty and staff, or are you talking about adult learners in the community?
I'm talking about the students who've already graduated. And they've been out there and they find out there is no there there. Then they come back.
Okay.
And they have to reinvent themselves against their will. I'm a living example of that. And you were talking about all these courses and whatnot. But the thing of it is, are the courses directed towards adults twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years old who have to reinvent themselves? Any kind of, any kind of service that, yes, it attracts them and makes them part, a functionable part of society. What would you do? How could you do it? How would you change certain things that are done, not done?
Yeah, so without being completely familiar with what's happening with adult education in Lemmonster, I think a few things that come directly to mind are, you know, one is, I think there's great opportunities to partner with community colleges and offer, you know, programming through the community colleges and kind of make a connection with, with Lemmonster Public Schools. I think too, I, I think there's, there's potentially an opportunity to do some CTE programming in the evening here. And I know there's a number of regional vocational schools that offer like, I think they call it like, for us, it's BVT After Dark. And it's providing like training programs for adults, just as you're speaking to, to do, you know, like if, if they have a passion for a particular trade, or they think they might have an interest in the trade, or almost doing like the exploratory that happens here in ninth grade where they can look at a few things and maybe make some informed decisions. I, I think the third thing I would do is, is try to like survey the community and get a sense of like what the needs are. Because, you know, I don't necessarily come in with all the answers, and I think it's critically important to be able to say, you know, what, what does the community want and how can we potentially provide that service? And it could be career counseling, it could be, you know, connections to training programs, it could be, it could be a lot of different things. And I don't think one thing is going to meet everybody's needs, so I think you have to do multiple things, just like during the regular school day, because there's, there's a variety of interests.
Did you have adult ed at your schools?
We, we do, I wouldn't say it's so career focused, we, we have, we have a pretty well-developed partnership with the Framingham Public Schools, where we provide adult DSL, that's, that's pretty well-developed. And we'll have some programs that say like, are you interested in, say, becoming an accountant? Are you interested in, but we don't have like the adult like, like degree programs or, or that type of thing.
All right, Ron, all right, next question is Mr. Sal Perola.
Good evening. Give me a, bear with me with this question, so special education's particular challenge because of the complexity of rules, service needs and student and parent concerns. When you assess the effectiveness of your special education programs, what are some of the criteria you use?
So I, I think special education has become, I think, even more complex in the last five years. And I, and I, and my sense is that, based on the conversations I've had, Lemmonster's a lot like Milford, where we're seeing an increase in, in mental health needs, we're seeing like a lot more depression, a lot more anxiety, we're seeing behaviors, we're, we're seeing our percentage of students with special needs going up, and I think the same thing seems to be happening in Lemmonster. I, I think how you assess programs and, is, is you look at, you look at the outcomes. Because you want a student, whether they're on an IP or not on an IP, to be successful. And, you know, because a student has a disability doesn't mean they can't go to college, it doesn't mean they can't, you know, participate in one of the trades programs, it doesn't mean they can't engage in some of the most rigorous coursework. But, you know, special education programming is very differentiated. So we have, you know, I think the focus in Lemmonster is probably on inclusion. And what are we doing to support the students with special needs in, in the classroom first? Which is probably the majority of students who are on IEPs. And how, how are those programs working? Are we, you know, are we making sure that we're accommodating the students, are we making the appropriate modifications? Are we ensuring that the students are making effective progress? You have some students who are in pullout programming, and I think when they're in pullout programming, you look at, you know, you can never win a race by going slower. So if students are behind and you go slower, you're going to fall further and further behind. And I think it's important, your, your, your goal is really to close the gap in those pullout programs. And, you know, I think you want to make sure that the teachers are qualified to, to teach, particularly when you get to the secondary level where the, you know, the math gets a little more complex and the expectations around writing and science get a little more complex, you want to make sure that they have access to high-quality instructors. I think if you're talking about your sub-separate programs, you want to make sure that those programs are moving those students forward in a way that's going to lead to a fulfilling life in a lot of ways. And are they going to, you know, for some students, is it moving into like, you know, more of a pullout situation? For other students, you're building life skills. So hopefully there's, there's partnerships in place. I know in Milford, we have a number of partnerships where students go out, there's a program at Milford Hospital, there's a program that we do at a couple grocery stores, we have a lot of work placements that are consistent. How are we making sure that those students can, can, when they graduate, whether it's at, you know, seventeen, eighteen or twenty-two, are they able to, you know, fully engage in the community?
Thank you. Mr. Tyler.
So what is your approach to extracurricular activities and how would you support them in the Lemmonster Public Schools?
I'm, I'm a big believer in fan of extracurricular activities. I'm, I'm a big athletics guy, but I absolutely love the arts as well. Two of my children are college athletes. So I'm, you know, love, love sports, I'm usually on a field most nights when I'm not working. It makes such a difference in students' lives. Sometimes like being on that soccer field, being on that football field, running around the track, performing in that concert, preparing for that play, you know, preparing that, you know, picture, doing community service, I think it's all critically important. I think it's, it's an important part of the school because it's, it's a big reason why a lot of students go to school every day, because they're so excited to be on that team, be part of that, you know, theater troupe, be, be part of that ensemble. So I, I think you want to have a very diverse extracurricular offerings because students have a lot of different interests, a lot of different passions, and I think the way, the way, the way I've approached things, whether, when I was a principal or superintendent is, you know, if there's a group of students who have like an interest in an activity and we can make it happen, I kind of want to make it happen, you know. And, and Milford at our middle school, we have a Harry Potter club where the kids get together and they watch movies and they read the books and they do activities connected to it, and it's awesome. We have another group that goes out and does hiking and climbs mountains and that sort of thing. So I think the more different things you can do, the other thing it does too, not just for the students, but it gets the teachers excited too, and it builds relationships in a very different way, where teachers have a different relationship when they're a coach or they're an advisor. Then, you know, I don't want to say just as a teacher, because the teaching relationship is so important, but it definitely like, the relationship you have with your coaches or your, you know, your, your band director or, you know, whatever activity you're involved in, is a different kind of relationship. And I think that's, that's so important too, so I think it works on a lot of different levels. So to summarize, big proponent.
Okay, is this, this is working, because oftentimes it's like, okay.
Can hear you fine.
Welcome, Dr. McIntyre.
Thank you.
Do you view the social and emotional well-being of children in the context of establishing high-performing school population?
Okay, so I, I think, I think students are under more pressure than they've ever been. It's, it's very, like, the most selective schools, I think the students that are like, trying to get into the most selective colleges and universities, so much more difficult today than it was ten, fifteen, twenty years ago. And I think students feel that pressure to, you know, get that perfect SAT score, or get that fuck the AP exam, or, or get, or get straight A's. And I think, I think sometimes, you know, as educators, we need to take a step back and say, you know, how can we reduce the pressure on these students and how can we like, you know, provide, you know, more support than, you know, just putting a target there for them and to reach to, because we're seeing like a, a lot of our high performers really, really struggling with, I think, you know, anxiety around the college admission process. You know, the, the amount of homework and making sure the homework is perfect, so you get that, you know, you get that A in that class, because if you don't get that A, you're not getting into, you know, Dartmouth or Duke or, you know, whatever, whatever, whatever the college university. I, I think it requires a little bit of a different support, because I think you can say like, hey, we can do whatever we can to release the pressure. And a lot of the pressure for these stu, for these students, excuse me, I'm going to try to get a little closer. A lot of the pressure for these students is internal. And I think if we can reduce some of the external pressure, I think it can reduce some of the internal pressure that the students are, are feeling and facing. I've seen, you know, so many students have, you know, breakdowns around, you know, exam time or around college admission, like acceptance day, or when they're trying to put college applications together. And, and again, I think you, you need to provide that support. You also need to kind of say that it's, it's okay if you don't get into an Ivy League school or an SCAC or, you know, a place like University of Chicago. You know, I think there's a lot of great colleges and universities out there and it's, it's not the end if you don't get into your top choice, your top three choices, or sometimes your top five choices. And I always advise, you know, students, and I, I worked as a college placement director, or college guidance director many years ago. And we would really focus on looking for fit and looking for, and having balance too. Which I think is important, because if you're not able to have fun when you're in high school, I think that's a real problem. And I think if you're not enjoying yourself when you're in college, I think that's, that's, that's a real problem. And, and I think there's, there's ways to kind of get students to realize that sometimes having a little bit of balance is, is important. And, you know, whether it's, you know, participating in an extracurricular activity, whether it's getting a little additional support from a guidance council, whether it's having a meeting with, with a family and just saying like, you know, it's, this is where you're at, this is the reality. You know, it's, it's okay if, you know, you get that A minus, it's okay if you get like a fourteen hundred on the SAT. Not, it's not going to be something that's going to ruin your life forever. And I think a lot of students don't have that foresight or experience to realize that, you know, there's, there's a lot of great colleges out there, there's a lot of great universities, there's, there's tons of opportunities. And, you know, you want to, you want to hyper-focus on one thing or two things, you want to be able to kind of say, this is kind of what I want to do, what are some places that are going to get me there? Or what is a pathway that's going to get me there? So I, I'm a big believer in trying to lower the pressure rather than increase the pressure, because I think we're, we're killing our, our highest performers in a lot of cases.
Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa?
Welcome back. Multicultural experiences are much more than just race, language or place of origin. What experiences do you have that relate to multicultural experiences? Especially when some cultures are different than your own? And how do these experiences affect the way that you work?
So I'm, I'm a big believer in that you have to, you know, respect everybody and you have to meet people kind of where they are. And I think, you know, Lemmonster, and I, and I hate to keep comparing, but Milford's been my frame of reference for the last eleven years, is, is very diverse, you know, we're, we're, I think fifty point two percent of our families speak a language other than English is the primary language in the home. We have multilingual learners, percentage of about thirty-two or thirty-three percent. And this has increased dramatically in the past, you know, eleven years since I've, I've been in Milford. And what we try to do, or what I've tried to do is be welcoming, be supportive, listen, be open and be, then be responsive. And, you know, I've tried to make connections with, you know, different groups and communities. Two of the biggest groups in Milford is a Brazilian community and an Ecuadorian community. And, and some of the things I've done is we've done outreach to the churches, we built a, a multilingual parent group that's actually starting to really take off. We're, we're teaching courses in different languages at the high school level, we're teaching a few courses in Spanish, a few courses in Portuguese. We're just trying to create opportunities where, you know, some, a lot of our signage is in multiple languages in the, in the buildings. So we're, we're putting a, a lot of language, we translate everything that we send out, we have trans, like a team of translators that we work with, that works with, that works with our families to make sure that they're getting the information that they need and it's, and it's clear. We're, you know, I, I think it's a lot of different things, and I think it's trying, you know, to make sure that everybody has what they need, they understand, they understand like what some of the expectations are too. We have a lot of families that come to us where the students haven't been in a school for a really long time and it takes a year or so to really kind of get acculturated to the school experience. And we try to do the best we can there as well, and you know, this is, this is what home, you know, this is what it means to do homework, this is what, you know, this is what you need to do to, you know, progress to the next grade level, these are, these are expectations around attendance. And I think, you know, even down to our cafeteria, we've offered, you know, different, that we've shifted the menu. You know, we, we were offering a lot of different things on the menu that we didn't offer, you know, five or ten years ago. We have, you know, taco bars and wraps and, you know, beans and rice and different things that appeal to different cultural groups in the community that, you know, we didn't have in the past, and our, our food services director is fantastic, you know, she, she's an Italian woman who used to, you know, they have a little shop in town and they used to catering for the Red Sox and, you know, very traditional menu and with a lot of Italian food, which is great. But they've been able to make adjustments to, to the menus too. So I think it's, it's approaching it from a lot of different, you know, a lot of different angles. You're going to have some conflicts and misunderstandings, and I think, you know, the important thing is to give grace to work through those issues and to, and again, to, to really listen, try to understand and try to get better. I think that's really what, what, what you try to do. And at the end of the day, you want everybody to feel welcome, you want everybody to feel like they belong. And you want to feel, everybody feel like they're part of the school community. And I think that happens in a lot of different ways. And I don't know if that fully answers the question or you get a, get a sense, but I think, I think you have to be opening to making adjustments to practice.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Next question is Jen. Jen?
Welcome. Lemmonster has three high schools operating under one roof. How would you support and sustain the work at each to serve all students in the district?
I, I think it's, it's just making sure that the three programs are kind of working together, and it, it sounds like, just based on my conversations when I was here, that's, that's, that's kind of happening. You know, we have a preschool and a high school together, which is, which is interesting. You know, we have the kids at the beginning and kind of the end of their academic careers and, you know, the preschool director and the high school director regularly work together. I would encourage the, the three principals or directors to meet regularly. I think communication is key, it's, it's so important for the three programs to communicate. So, you know, you don't take the auditorium on a day when, you know, one, you know, another program does, those kinds of things. I, I think it's collaboration, I mean, they're all Lemmonster students, they're all our students. And I think you're trying to, you know, make it work the best for all those students that are there and, and just creating opportunities for, you know, the administrators and the staff to kind of work together, so there's, you know, no misunderstandings, no, no challenges. I, I don't, I don't think it's that difficult to do, to be honest with you, or it shouldn't be. And I think, you know, it's something that if, if there, if there is an issue there, I would, you know, definitely work with, work with the folks to make sure that, you know, we're able to work collaboratively together. We had an issue in Milford where we have, we have an interesting grade configuration, we have K two, there are two separate schools of about five hundred students each, and then three through twelve, everybody's together. And the experiences were a little different. This is much better, because it just went black for a second. It was, yeah, it was, it's better than the back, because it went, like, I thought I just had a bald spot, but it's really bald back there.
But you know, no, it won't hurt you personally.
Like, I like this view a lot better.
I never look.
Yeah, so, I like, I like the front, the front view's a better, the front view's a better look. I, I'm feeling the empathy here. But one of the things we did was, the, the experiences were very different in the K twos, the two different K twos. And it, it just happened over time, like they just kind of diverged. And so one of the things we did is we started, we said, hey, let's start converging our program. And I think the schools can be a little unique, and I think that's okay. But the principals met regularly, and then we, we included our three through five principal, which also helped with transitions. So, you know, the principals met on a weekly basis, I joined for a little while, then I stepped back because they really didn't need me there. They probably didn't need me there from the start, I just said, hey, we got to start meeting and, you know, kind of bringing this together. But, but I think that's, those are the types of things you have to do, is to just get people in the room together talking. And a lot of times, like if people don't talk, they assume the, sometimes the worst. My approach is always assume the best intentions from the other person. That's where I start. Sometimes that's not where I finish, but that's where, that's where I try to, that's where I try to start. And I think I do that at the, at the high school. And I think I do that at, at the high school level. If there was like, you know, communication issues, and I'm not saying there are, but I, I'm just saying that's how I would approach it.
Okay. Josh?
Please discuss your approach to school safety, speaking from your own experience.
I, I think the first thing, at first, the most critical thing is that everybody's responding. Safety is the most important thing that we do. If, you know, families don't feel like the buildings are safe, students don't feel like the buildings are safe, teachers don't feel safe. You've got to figure out why and correct it. Critic- critically important. The second thing I'll say is safety is everybody's responsibility. It's not the principal. It's not the school resource officer. It's everybody. It's teachers. It's the administrators, it's the students. And, and a lot of it is around building trust. And, you know, if you build trust that, you know, if, if a parent calls you and says, hey, I heard this in the community, you know, can you look into it? They're gonna know that we're gonna look into it and address the situation. The, the other piece is just partners and having like strong partners in the work. And we've, I've been able to develop a great relationship with the Milford Police Department as well as the Milford Fire Department. And, you know, I've got, we've got a tactical team in Milford that responds if there's a critical incident. But all those guys are on my cell phone and they know they can text me or call me at any time. And they know I can do the same thing to them. And we're gonna, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna communicate regularly. Same with the fire department. It's, you know, having regular communication. And we're, we're setting up kind of regular meetings with a, with a, with a district safety team where, you know, we're, we're, we're working through all the issues. So we're getting the input from police, fire and schools. So we're all on the same page. When an issue happens, you're, you're working together. And we've had, you know, unfortunately, and I think most communities have dealt with this, you know, several critical incidents over the last, you know, three to five years. And, you know, we set up a, a command post immediately and really worked to address the situation. And everybody takes a role and depending on what the situation is, you know, we, we make decisions on the spot. That's what you have to do. And, you know, you can have plans and protocols in place. But when a situation actually occurs, I don't want to say that goes out the window, but you have to deal with the exact situation that's on the ground. And, you know, if you're, you have to evacuate a building, if you have to, you know, the communication to families with social media, you know, something happens and it's out there almost immediately. So you have to be on top of the communication. So parents aren't panicking. You have to, you know, be communicating with the folks on the ground so they know exactly what to do. And it's, it's, it's creating like, you know, one voice for each circumstance. And, you know, we had a, we had a situation last year where one of our middle school students decided to let off some mace in a crowded hallway about ten minutes before dismissal. And, you know, it took us a little while to figure out what it was. And, you know, there were students having a reaction to the, the substance. So we had to, you know, bring our nursing staff in to assess. And, you know, there's a communication piece. The students were leaving late because we couldn't let anybody get on the bus if they needed some kind of medical attention. But it was, it was just coordinated communication, working, working together. And, and that's how we, you know, approached everything. We had a swatting call within the last year. And that's, if people don't know what a swatting call is, it's when somebody calls in like a, like there's an active shooter on site when there isn't. And, you know, we have to respond like there is. And, you know, we did the same thing. You know, we had the, you know, the police and the tactical team approached. We communicated to the, you know, the students and the families and, you know, addressed it. And, and, you know, we take everything very seriously and you have to. Because, you know, you, you, if you have a newspaper or a phone, you see the stuff that's happening around the world and you want to be, you want to make sure the students are safe and the staff is safe and parents are informed when an issue happens. All those things need, need to happen. And I think it's, it's relationships, it's building trust. And it's also just keeping those lines of communication open. And I think if one of those things break down, you, you have problems. And there's some places where, you know, schools and police don't work together, or schools and fire don't work together. You know, nobody works together. It's like, you know, there was the Red Sox in the seventies, twenty-one, twenty-one players, twenty-one caps, kind of a situation. And that's absolutely what you don't want. And you want to be able to, you know, have productive disagreements with people because that's how pro- you know, process and, you know, relationships improve. And you want to have those relationships where you can have a little bit of a, a, you know, a conflict, but, you know, walk out hand in hand right afterwards. I think all that's important. But safety is the most important thing. I take it very seriously. You know, we've, we've had some unsafe situations in my ten years in the Milford Public Schools. I think anybody who's working in public education who says they haven't is lying to you. But you, you know, you, you address it, you know, and, and, you know, even smaller things. I work directly with the principals. They call me when there's a situation. We talk it through and we work it through. And, you know, we, we bring the correct resources to bear depending on what the particular circumstance is. And that's, that's how you resolve this stuff. It's, it's collaborative and it's, it's making that the priority. So whatever I'm doing, if there's a safety issue, like if I got a call right now, I'd say, excuse me, I've got to, I've got to take this because it's the most important thing.
Okay.
So this is a little bit like my question from the initial, so I'm gonna paraphrase, I'm gonna change it around a little bit. I think we all know that you know the technical and the legal language of the duties, responsibilities of the superintendent and the school committee. But I just want to give an opportunity to expand a little bit on your personal relationship with school committee members. I know we know the legal part, but I don't think I asked the other part, which is, well, so how do you really get along? You know, how do you really interact with the school committee?
Yeah, I, I think it's very similar. It's, it's, you know, I think just being completely like an open door. Like right before I walked in here, a school committee member had a question. They texted me and said, hey, do you have five minutes? I said, absolutely. It was, it was a very small thing, but I just, you know, responded to them. And, you know, and, you know, if, if I were to be afforded the opportunity to come and be the superintendent in Lemonster, I would take the same approach, you know, just the best way to reach me is always via text. I'm happy to answer a question. I try to be as transparent as possible. You know, if, if people have a question on what's happening in a particular place or what's, what's, you know, wha- what's going on in this particular school, I'm more than happy to have that conversation. I also understand, like, you know, go back to the legal piece that, you know, there's, there's one committee that kind of speaks to me as like a, a general supervisor. But there's also, I think those important relationships that, that need to happen. And, you know, you, you need to have those conversations. You have the ability to say like, hey, I'm concerned about what's happening with the Fallbrook Building Project. Can I come in and have a quick conversation with you? Or, hey, you know, I, I'm concerned about how, you know, we're doing admissions in the C T programs. Can I have a conversation? I think all that is, is good. And I think it's important. So I, I think I try to be available, open, almost to fault, I think, to some, to some degree. But, but I think it's important to be, to be accessible. Because, you know, you ultimately are the elected officials that are responsible to the, to the community. And I'm kind of the conduit to the school system and, you know, you know, but I, what I try to do too, just in, in terms of communications, if there's an issue that's, you know, that's happening in real time, I, I try to send a text immediately. If it's something that's not an emergency, but I think you need to know about collectively, I'll send an email to everybody. It's kind of how, how, just, just how I operate. And, you know, if you feel like, hey, I really, I really feel like the group should have known about that, I'd say, okay, in the future, I can, I can add that to the list of things I communicate on. So, you know, I'm, I'm pretty good about taking feedback. I'm pretty good about, you know, changing course and changing direction on things based on the needs. And I've had, so I've had eight different committees. The committees have operated in eight different ways. And I've had to adjust and adapt to that. That's, that's kind of how, does, does that kind of get to what you're?
No, exactly. I think that's, do I speak for us? I think that's where it's, I, I knew last time it was more of the, you know, what's the, the legal.
Right, 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 right.
What superintendent in, in the school committee did. That was just more of, you know, your interaction and what your style. Thank you. Tyler?
So as our superintendent, what would be your vision for our district?
So I, I think the, the, the vision would develop over time, to be honest with you. But I think, you know, I want what's best for the Lemonster students at, at the end of the day. And how can we create programs or, or improve upon programs or adapt or adjust to make sure that every student is getting what they need? And we're, we're moving every student to get to where they want to go. One, one thing I do, and this is, this is something that shifted a little bit during the pandemic, but I don't give a speech at graduation. What I do is I have a little individual conversation with each graduate. And I haven't done it in a couple of years because we shifted things a little bit post pandemic. But I want to hear like what the student's doing after graduation and what their, what their, what their plans are. And if they don't have, if they don't have a plan, I give them my number and I say, call me and come see me. And now, not every student does that, but a number have. And I've, you know, tried to really get them on the right path. And I think that's what we're about. So education is about, you know, moving students from point A to point Z really, when they start with us. You know, if they start with us in preschool or kindergarten, you know, how do we get them to where they want to go? And how do we meet what the community needs and expectations are for what, you know, a high quality education is? So I want, I would want people to say that, you know, Lemonster is, is, is the absolute best school district that meets the needs of the students that it serves. And I would want, I know, I know there's been discussion about school choice here. And I would want us to be like a, a school choice destination because we have such exceptional programs. And we have such exceptional extracurricular activities and the overall experience is phenomenal, that every student and every family would want to be part of the Lemonster School Committee. I think that's the approach you kind of have to take. And, you know, I think there's, there's a lot of different ways to get there. And I think people are going to have different opinions based on kind of where they, where they sit or where they stand or how they, how they kind of see things. But you want the schools to be viewed as something that is getting people to move into town, is getting people to, uh, move into the city, stay in the city. And, you know, the people are, and, and I, and there's already a passion. I can see that, you know, talking to the, talking to the, you know, the administrators, talking to some teachers, meeting with folks. Like, there's a real spirit and commitment from the team here. Or at least that was my first impression. And I'm seeing a few heads nod. That's a good thing. But like, everybody wants to do better for the kids. They're not satisfied with where they are. They want things to be better. And I think you have to have that spirit of continuous learning, continuous improvement. And, and, and the willingness to kind of step back and say, you know, hey, if we do this a little differently, or if we adjust this here, things can be a little better. I think that's always a good thing. Now, what I could see is there's a lot of really good things going on. And again, I'm not coming in to like, you know, change things radically, be a disruptor, because I think it's just, it's just building on the work of the people that were, were here before me. And I think, you know, and I think you have to respect that work because I think people have taken it seriously. That's, that's clear to me. I think they've been very thoughtful about it. And, you know, a couple of conversations I had with, you know, principals and assistant principals is their focus is right down to the individual student, which I think is awesome, fantastic. And I think that's how you have to do things. Cause, you know, it matters to every student, every family, that you're looking at what they're doing and how you, how you're getting them to move forward.
Thank you. And the best question of the night goes to Eileen. We tricked you. Just in case you didn't think we were gonna bring it up again.
Yeah. So I, I, I think there's a lot, there's a lot of reasons. I think going back to what I just said, there's significant, I think, community civic pride in the city. You know, I love the, uh, the Lemonster, is it the Lemonster Legends or the Lemonster?
Legendary Lemonster.
Legend, legendary Lemonster.
Anybody can be a legend.
Uh, but I love that. Like even just driving downtown when I was here, driving around the, the city, I think it's great that you like celebrate, you know, residents. And, you know, you celebrate, you know, folks who are in the military. I, I think that's, that's awesome. I think, you know, the Johnny Appleseed piece and like a lot of the fall festivals, I think is, is a really kind of, it's a really fantastic thing. You know, I think the, the history in the community, there's a vibrant kind of manufacturing business. There's a strong athletic, you know, history. There's, there's arts and culture that, uh, that I think there's, there's a lot of pride there. The, the other piece that I really like is that, you know, it's, I always describe Milford as a wonderfully diverse community. And I would describe Lemonster the same way. It seems like, you know, there's, there's a lot of different communities that have come together over the years. And, and I think that's something that, you know, you should all be proud of because I think it's, you know, it's, it's hard to do. And I know it takes constant work. You know, when I visited on, uh, was it, I think a week ago, a week ago, Monday, maybe two weeks ago, two weeks ago, maybe. It's blended together. This time of year is, is, is pretty hectic. But like, I, I just love like the feeling, like when you walk into a place, you get a feel for it. You know, and, and I think every, every school I walked into, I was like, I, I like what I'm like, you know, I love the conversation. I liked the, the, the culture. I liked what the principals, assistant principals, teachers, some of the central office staff had to say. I, you know, I think like everybody was working towards good, like I, what I would consider good goals. And I think the, the, the things they were working on academically, I think were really good too. So I thought that was fantastic. I love the C T E programming at the high school. I think that's something that, you know, really excites me. Uh, it's something that we're trying to get more involved in, in Milford. So I, there's a lot here. Like, like, I, I think, I think that like summarize those, the community pride, I think there's, there's a real like, there's a real positive, like I got the feeling there's a real positive culture in, in a lot of the schools. And again, I, I don't think any place is perfect every day and there's issues everywhere. But I just got, I just got a real good impression when I, when I visited. I had a very positive experience during the first round of the interviews. Jennifer, I think, had a positive experience when she visited Milford. She, she met a couple of characters. But, but I think like, I would be proud to be the superintendent in the Lemonster Public Schools. And I would, I would give it my all. I think you should know that. And that's, that's what I do. I throw myself into things. I'm kind of a twenty-four seven guy. And, you know, I would, I would get involved in the community. People would harass me at the grocery store in a positive way. And, but I, but I'd be available and I'd be, you know, and I, I'd want to do things like the context of the city matters so much. And I'd want to like build upon what's, 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 what's working. And, you know, and really try to like, you know, move us in that direction where we are the premier, you know, city district in Massachusetts. And, and everybody says, hey, I want to be part of the, the Lemonster Public Schools. I'm going to default to Milford sometimes because I've been there for eleven years. So you have to, you'll have to pardon me for that. But that's, that's, I think, I, that's why Lemonster. I think, I think I'm excited about it.
Other than, when we're gonna make a decision. And so when I always ask everybody, you have any questions? They're like, yeah, when are you gonna make a decision?
It sounds like, it sounds like tonight, right? Is that?
Could be tonight. It could be tonight. But do you want to ask it? You want to ask a question? We have a question now if you want it, unless you want to wait for the next round. It's okay. All set? How about next time? We can just give you one next time. How's that?
You can, you can throw one out from the cuff if you want, yeah.
Yeah.
Milford is red.
You have any, ooh, do you have any blue clothes?
Right here, man. Look like, this is, this is like blue from like all the way down to the socks.
Yeah.
Uh, Milford Scarlet Hawks, Scarlet Hawks.
Any questions for us?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I would, I would say, I'll ask three questions. And I don't know how much time we have. Are we good on time?
Ask the question, we'll let you know.
It depends on the, it depends on the answer too. I, I guess, what are you looking for the next superintendent to do is, is this school committee members? I don't know if like maybe a couple of people want to answer that. Like what do you, what are you looking for that person to do?
I think we touched on that a little bit, but it wasn't the whole committee at the, you know, the subcommittee that started initially and looking for a leader. We don't, I, I, I don't want to speak for everybody. We, we don't expect a superintendent is going to understand every single thing, like everything about, you know, C T E I or everything about, you know, the, whatever program it might be. But we, we, we need to, you know, we have a vision. We're only a community. We have some people. It's very diverse in many, many ways. And yet we sort of have a kind of mission. And superintendent is the person that, you know, follows through with the mission to make sure that every kid gets the best education they can here. And I say this all the time, teachers, guidance staff will do anything for any student to succeed. Along the way, there's some people don't take education so seriously. They're not interested, they're bored, whatever it is.
We even try to.
That's weird. That doesn't happen in Milford.
It does. It happened to me. But I mean, but at the same time, we have so many more options today than we had and twenty, thirty years ago to try to, you know, galvanize that interest, to try to, you know, provide the spark. So I, I think what we look to do is move the system forward and adapt as we go along. Because the world's changing on us faster than anyone, you know, than, than we could ever imagine. We'd all talk about stories about when I was young, but man, this young thing is moving quick. I mean, it just is. Technology is just.
Well, it's just like every like eighteen months.
Yeah, but it's eighteen months is now eighteen days. Things change fast. And so, you know, we want somebody that can lead us and be part of the community and recognizable in the community and, and build support on the outside. I mean, we're gonna have to build a new school. And it's, it's, you take every project that we've ever done in the city, add them all up. It still doesn't, it, it just about comes close to what it's going to cost us to build the next school. We need the support of the community. Superintendent is, you know, that person that's out there with us, you know, you know, making that, that, making the case, right?
Yes, I would add to it that we need, you know, a leader like Dean said, but somebody who is able to make decisions when needed, hold people accountable. is able to make decisions when needed, hold people accountable, but also to celebrate all of our successes, to be visible in the community. To, you know, help every child achieve their optimal level of success, whatever that may be for that child. But to really, you know, be part of the community, not only the school community, but, you know, our greater community. And, you know, really to partner with the school committee, with the parents, you know, with our stakeholders, obviously with our teachers and students and other, you know, staff in the building. And really, you know, challenge everybody to do the best that they can do and provide the support in order for them to do that. And that's not always, you know, easy to come together in crisis, but also to come together and tout our successes and and celebrate all those things that make us Lemonster. So what I would add, I don't know what other people would add.
Well, we're gonna be running out of time. Is anything anybody wanted to jump in?
Go ahead. I would just add that both of both of those comments were exactly what I would say. Important to me and I would imagine others, we're just looking for someone to champion efforts behind every student. Every person who walks in any classroom that we see. Someone that takes consideration from the day they start from a pre K program to graduation day. Really take that.
I think I explained in the past that maybe Melissa can even identify with this and some of the other members. At one point, if somebody was renting an apartment, it was in the days of the newspaper, you you had an ad in the paper. If they found, you wouldn't, you would just put a phone number. When they found out where it was, they'd say, I'm sorry, I'm not, I don't want my kid going to right. And and I can actually say, I haven't heard a person buy a house, get an apartment, live in a district, say that about any of our schools. This group and others, other committees have worked real hard to make sure there's equity within our schools, no matter where you go. That's right down to the finite details and working with the superintendent and the staff. You know, there's some people just fine with it saying, well, you know, it's too bad, you know, my kid goes over here. So too bad. But I I think we can honestly say that. And and Sandra, you were around, right?
Taught here for 30 years. Oh, wow. And I have a huge investment here. Both of my children graduated from Lemonster High. They're both doing well. DEI is pretty much my favorite. I taught there for 17 years. So I started at the elementary level, then I went to the middle school level, and then I came to the high schools. So you know, I've been around for a while and I've seen a lot happen. And again, this has become my town, my city, my kids. And I even see kids of kids that I have. So it's a nice feeling and that's why I'm hugely invested in this in this decision.
So that just shows you can set your sights on something with the right team of people pushing in the same direction with the right leader and accomplish those things. That was big. That was huge. You know, all right, who who had a question?
He had three questions.
Okay. So I'm going to direct the next one to the students, if that's okay. I'm gonna put you on the spot whether you like it or not, my friend.
They love it. They love it. They eat it up.
So what what is the best thing or best part of your experience in Lemonster? I'd love to hear like through the school system. It could be like when you're an elementary student or, you know, at the high school. Like, what was the best thing that you experienced? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'll go first. So for me, so far, the best thing in Lemonster High School that I've personally experienced is the shop program here. So when I was a kid, in every single school I went to was mainly academics, you know, I had not really nothing else to do. I didn't do sports, but you know, when I was a freshman coming here, I saw the programs that they had here about alternatives to academics. And, you know, I like academics myself, I highly strive in my grades, but you know, I like to find something like a skill that I can put all my ability into. Me personally, I mean, Colin, I've been there for three years, you know, and I enjoy it very much so than I would, you know, say in academics or that. So CTI is a huge part of why I'm a president, why I'm so involved in CTI as a whole. That's because I just love shop in general.
Great. I I would say like more so extracurriculars and the overall sense of community in Lemonster, like the relationships that I've built with teachers, especially at the high school are 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 very strong and ones that I'm going to take with me when I graduate, when I leave, like I'm in and out of teachers' rooms. Even when I don't have their class, you know, I'm 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 with them. And those relationships have been very strong. But when it comes to extracurriculars, I played football and then I used to play baseball. And the sense of community revolving around our extracurriculars in Lemonster is very special and is something that has been very special for for many, many years. And I think anyone, whether it's the mayor, anybody on this committee can testify to that. Community revolving around athletics is is very, very strong and passionate. And that's why I love being here in Lemonster. You know, I don't live in Lemonster. I live in Pittsburgh. So
Okay, so you chose to stay here.
I did. My mother's a teacher here.
Okay. And recently adopted into the Hall of Fame, Sports Hall of Fame.
Yeah. Really?
Yeah.
Oh, congratulations.
Well, my mother, my mother.
He said, congratulations.
Pass it along. Tell about you, Tyler.
But athletics. I I would say extracurricular.
And then my last question, I'll just throw like, and I want to end on like, I don't think it's a negative necessarily, but what are the challenges you see is like, you know, for the next three years that you say like, hey, we want the the school team to tackle the one, two or three things. Like this is what's that mean?
But but I also think it's great that we have this multicultural, multiracial, multilingual, multi-religion community. And I think like with everything in life, 99% of the intentions and the people that you're going to come across are good and well intended. But then there's that 1% that creates 99% of the struggle in the battle. So I think it's going to be able to have a strong backbone and have pushback as our world and our community in our country are changing and going through changes in patience and tolerance and educate culture. Yeah, very, very true. It's great that we have a very diverse community, but sometimes those diversities don't always get along.
Diversity of opinions.
You know, I I say money only because there are a number of school systems this year financially in trouble and they can have all the vision in the world, but now they're gonna have to make the best of what they have. And I think that's always the issue is always making, no matter what the budget is or what grant we get, is always making the most of what we have. Because sometimes there's, you know, nothing that you can do about it. So you have to do what's what's best. But I think it's just adaptability is is there are so many more occupations and so many careers. Like you said, you know, he was always interested in academics, but he knew he wanted to do something else other than that.
Which I think is awesome.
Yeah. And and excel in that and put his other extra energy into it. And I think we've got to connect more students with more experiences and show them the different opportunities, literally show them the opportunities that are out there so they can decide themselves. It it's some and some people are very visual. You gotta show them. When they see it, they're like, yeah, that's exactly what I want to do. Some people know right away what they want to do and others just aren't sure. And so the more you can expose them to things, the better chance they have.
Also embracing change. I mean, things are constantly changing and sometimes that's really hard for folks to do. And maybe doing something for time in a certain way. So I think that's something that not only our school system is going to have to deal with, but as a whole. Change is hard and things are changing quickly, as the mayor pointed out.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for having me. I'd be honored if you were to thank me. I think I'm gonna make a recommendation to adjourn the meeting now so everybody can get all in favor?
Well, at least at least you took leadership.
Thank you. Have a good night. Good luck with the rest.
We'll take a couple minute break and then
They're saying they can't get access to it.
It is. It is being aired live. Yeah, there is a link posted the Zoom. Yep. But you're you're I'm sorry, just to be clear, Mr. Chair, you're taking a recess?
Yeah.
For how long?
All right, motion to recess. Favor?
You guys can eat because I'm the, I got the first question.
Only you and I and Josh.
Good evening. How are you?
Great, how are you?
So you can sit anywhere, just like last time, sit wherever you want, can move the chair around, move the table. That makes you happy. All right. I just saw how many of the first question. You can see everybody's got a nameplate here, I assume. Does anybody have one? You can't be anybody you want tonight. All right. First question is, how would you work to become part of the alumnus community in supporting our school district?
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Renee McCall. I am very-
As close as you can speak.
Not you, it's us.
Yeah.
Very happy to be here this evening. As I think about this question and coming to Lemonster, I think it's really important to start with a listening tour. And what that means is making connections with the school leaders, teachers, all educators, partners, businesses, families, students, ensuring that we make a connection. I think it's important that your core values as a district align with my core values as an individual. I think it's really important that we develop trust early on. We'll be meeting frequently, really with the vision of ensuring that all students in the Lemonster Public Schools have access to a rigorous, engaging, culturally responsive, and relevant education. And so I would make sure again to prioritize meeting with everyone, all the stakeholders, to ensure again that we are aligned on our mission and vision, to ensure that all students have what they need to be successful, both in school and beyond.
And how about outside the community, side of the different organizations, the chamber, or the, you know, businesses, etc.
Absolutely, all of the above. Even though I am not from Lemonster, I have a commitment to be of Lemonster. And that means I plan to be visible. I plan to be out in the community, engaging with partners and those individuals again who are invested in the success of our young people. You'll find me on the field, watching games, attending plays, engaging in the rich culture that Lemonster offers. So I would say certainly I would be visible, that is critical again, to ensure that we are aligned in our thinking, making sure students' needs are at the center of our decision-making.
Thank you. Greg?
Hi.
Hi.
How would you approach the district's desire to improve and maintain high academic achievement? How would you sustain access to advanced court classwork?
In doing research on Lemonster Public Schools, I know recently there was a site visit completed. I know the report is forthcoming, however, the most recent site visit was from 2012, so I reviewed that. And in that report, there are some glows, some bright spots, but of course, there were areas for improvement. And one of those was around highly qualified instructional materials. And what I noticed in looking at school committee meetings, as well as line by line, looking at the budget, I can understand that there has been investment in those high-quality instructional materials. And so that, when we think about the instructional core, is one important part of the puzzle. So we want to ensure that students, again, as we analyze our policies and procedures in the district, that we identify and disrupt any inequities that exist that present barriers for our students to high-level courses. It's important that we maintain high expectations for all of our students, regardless of where they are from, whether English is not their first language, whether a student has an IEP. It is important that we provide what is necessary in terms of the resources, in terms of the learning experiences, high expectations, ensuring that teachers have what they need in terms of professional learning, so that they can serve the needs of all of our students. And those needs are unique to every student, and it's important that we have relationships with them as well, that we know something personal about them and their families, so that again, we can leverage those relationships as we push those students to higher coursework and to ensure that they have what they need, both in school, again, and beyond the doors of the school. So I would ensure again that we look at those policy, identifying any barriers that we unintentionally are perpetuating, and so that students again can have the opportunity to be, to have access to higher-level coursework.
Thank you.
Thank you. So? Oh Ronnie, I'm sorry.
All right, I always get bypassed anyway, so what the heck?
I always save you the last because you're the best.
No, it's okay, I mean, I'm used to it. Anyway, good evening.
Good evening.
Please speak to the needs of adult learners and how you work to address them.
When I was a principal in Boston, one of the needs that we identified was students who were overage and undercredited. And what we found was those students were impacted by some decisions that they had to make, whether it be working after school and just not being able to make it to school on a consistent basis. And so we had to get creative to think about how we might be able to create alternative pathways for them to be able to graduate. So one of those things is to create a flexible schedule. So the schedule at the high school was probably six and a half hours. We created an opportunity for students to come at various times throughout the day, and also to have access to online coursework. They also were assigned a mentor, and that mentor checked in with them on a frequent basis to ensure that they were making progress. So I think the coaching, the mentoring, the understanding that not all students are going to be able to follow along in a traditional pathway to graduation, and that we have to be open and creative with those decisions to ensure that we're making, again, that we are removing barriers and making sure that students are able to graduate and again, be able to exceed those expectations that we have for them. But it may look a bit different than another student, and there's no one size fits all. So we want to, again, make sure that we have opportunities for them to reach those expectations in a different way.
When I, when I, when I, when I, when I say adult learners, I'm not just talking about the kids who just graduated from high school. I'm talking about the kids who have already graduated. They've already gone out there, and there is no there there.
Do you have adult learning programs at any of the schools that you worked with or any of the districts?
So when I think of adult learner, I'm thinking about a student who may not have reached graduation requirements, but you're referring to someone who has graduated.
Already graduated, and now they gotta come back, and they have to reinvent themselves. I am an example. I know I keep saying it all the time, and please forgive me. I am an example of having to reinvent myself against my-
So Ron, do you mean like night school or classes during the weekend?
Whatever way you want to address it.
Or let her answer it. Okay.
I am, it's my mantra. Adult learning isn't just for eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
So what would you do as the superintendent?
Forty-year-old, fifty-year-old, six-year-old, they have, because they're being forced to reinvent themselves.
So what would you do as the superintendent to encourage, it's lifelong learning, let's face it, right? You'd be the superintendent of schools, it all goes up to the 12th grade, right? But what would you do beyond that, with your resources or the resources of the city to help with continuing education?
Well, you know, to continue with education, I would say I would open the doors to say that mentoring is an opportunity for those who are adult learners coming back into the fold. I think that you could be a living testament for those students who are in the very same position, again, who have alternate pathways to success. There is no one size fits all, in that we come from a strength-based perspective. So I would leverage your experiences and to ensure that we are sharing those with the students who are coming behind you. I certainly value all that you bring to the table, and any graduate of the Lemonster Public Schools will have a place here in Lemonster Public Schools beyond the graduation date. We want to ensure again that you understand that you are a valued member of this community and this school system. You have a lot to provide for students, and so I would say for those adult learners, we, we welcome you with open arms.
Did you have adult programs at the Newton or Boston?
Well, in Boston, I mean, what comes to mind for me is the overage, undercredited program. But outside of that, we did not. I'm also thinking about, I wonder if you're also referring to programs where adults in the community could come to take English as a second language. I'm not certain if that's what you're referring to, but that could be an opportunity as well. Again, I am open to partnering with those individuals who have ideas about how we might be able to improve what is happening in the Lemonster Public Schools. I am a collaborative leader, I am a creative problem solver. And if you have ideas, again, that will benefit all of our students, I'm happy to hear that and work with you to improve the outcomes for our learner.
Okay, thank you. No. So?
Good evening, welcome. So special education is a particular challenge because of the complexity of rules, service needs, and student and parent concerns. When you assess the effectiveness of your special education programs, what are some of the criteria you use?
One of the things that immediately come to mind for me is the opportunity in the Newton Public Schools to cross-collaborate with the Department of Student Services, as well as the Department of Elementary Education. And as we think about the instructional core, we are ensuring that we're providing all of the educators in those departments with a framework for talking about instruction and centering that as we go into classrooms and maintain expectations for all students. And so in terms of special education, we want to ensure it is the least restrictive environment for our learners. We want to ensure that we have programs that meet their needs in the district. We want to be familiar with their accommodations and modifications, making connections with their families, understanding what their strengths are. Coming from that strength-based perspective, I think is important. We want to ensure that all students see themselves as scholars, regardless if they have, again, an IEP. A student might, where English is not their first language, that we are ensuring that they have what they need to succeed. So I would say, again, as we think about our special education programs, we want to ensure that we are familiar with their needs. We want to ensure, again, that it is an environment where it is the least restrictive as possible. We want to ensure that students also have the ability to have access to grade-level materials. So when I talk about the instructional core and ensuring that everyone has that idea of what effective, excellent instruction looks like, that's from the Special Education Department, the General Education Department, elementary ed, secondary ed. Everyone is rowing their boats in the same direction, again, that all students have what they need to get to graduation and beyond.
You want to take it Tyler, or you're gonna take one and he's gonna take one?
I, he's gonna take my, my second one. All right, go ahead. So what is your approach to extracurricular activities, and how would you support them in the Lemonster Public Schools?
My approach to extracurricular activities makes me think about, again, when I was a high school principal, there were students who had an interest in programs that didn't exist. Like the Anime Club, I remember, was one that students were interested in. I remember one year, we didn't have a cheerleading coach, and I stepped up to fill that role. I had never had experience cheerleading, I had experience running track. But I wanted to make sure that the members on that team could perform. It was something that they cherished and valued, as well as the families, it was important for them to show up to games and cheer their teams on. So I wanted to make sure that that was going to happen. So I would say if students don't see a particular program or club that is offered after school, that they have the opportunity to find someone who is going to advise that program, and that so that that can take place for that individual and all students. And so every student has a place in the Lemonster Public Schools. I want them to feel seen, valued, and heard, and have the opportunity to show up as their authentic selves. And so it's important that we have opportunities for all students, making sure that we have advisors who are also invested in the success of our young people.
Some next?
Andrea.
Welcome, Dr. McCall.
Thank you.
How do you view the social and emotional well-being of children in the context of establishing high-performing school population?
So after the pandemic, of course, we realized that social, emotional, and mental health was quite a concern for all of our students, not just some, but all. As students were being reintroduced to coming back to working with other students in the school building, it is important that we recognize what those needs are, and that we have the staffing to support those student needs. We want to ensure that we have social workers in place. We want to ensure that students have at least one person in the building that they can connect with. Sense of belonging is really important, again, as we think about reconnecting with one another. So when I think about this question here around high-performing populations, we want to ensure, again, that we understand what the needs are. We have the resources and supports to meet students where they are. We have the resources and supports to meet students where they are, to get them to where they need to be. To provide that ongoing support is really important. So I think that needs to be centered for our students. But I think being concerned about social, emotional learning as well as the mental health of all students, not just those students who are high performing, but all of our students, we need to be sure that they are connected to one another and that they're connected to at least one person in the building. So as I take a look and consider our youth risk behavior survey results, what we're finding is that for certain populations of students, they don't have that one person. And so thinking about ways that we might be able to encourage that, helping our educators know that students need them to show up for them. If students do not feel psychologically safe, it is a challenge for them to perform academically well. So we do, again, want to ensure that we are aware of what's necessary for students to feel safe and support it. And I also think that it's important that we maintain connections with the families so that they understand that we are totally invested in the success of their young people.
Thank you. Melissa?
Multicultural experiences are much more than just race, language or place of origin. What experiences do you have that relate to multicultural experiences, especially when some cultures have different values from your own? How do these experiences affect the way you work?
As the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, we always want to ensure that we get curriculum right. And there have been instances where some families believe that we did not get it fully right on some topics. And so we wanted to be sure to invite those voices to the table to better understand how we might be able to more accurately reflect that topic and content that we are covering. And so even if we don't share the same opinions on something, I think it's important that we maintain productive discourse so that I take on a learning stance and those individuals that I engage with are also taking on a learning stance so that we can work toward our vision and goal of ensuring that our students have a highly qualified learning experience on a daily basis. So we do want to make sure that families understand that they have a seat at the table, that their opinions matter. And so when I think about this one particular incident, I immediately contacted the family and asked them to come in so we can discuss. Because what they shared is that the, the lesson as presented had an impact on their child. And we wondered if, if that impact was broader or reached farther than that one particular student. So we wanted to address it right away. Again, we invited them in, we engaged in a conversation, we shared resources. And what we wanted them to understand is that we value what they bring to the table, that I don't know everything and that our team will make mistakes, but we own those mistakes and we want to get it right. It is important that we accurately portray all information that we are presenting to our students, that it is, again, open to that level of feedback so that we can continue to get better. We have a commitment to continuous improvement on many different levels. And so, again, having that voice at the table, opening our eyes to information that we may not have considered previously. Again, as we think about what is best for our students, I maintain that it is important to create a space and a seat at the table so that we can work together to ensure that all students have access to an engaging learning experience.
Thank you. Jen?
Miss Earth has three high schools operating under one roof. How would you support and sustain the work of each or all students in the district?
I talked a little bit earlier about our cross-department work in the Newton Public Schools. So as I reflect on my visit with the three leaders a couple of weeks ago, I think it would be important to understand what their common issues are so that we can work together to solve those problems. I think it's important to be grounded in a common vision that we co-construct so that those leaders own a portion of that co-constructed vision. I think as we consider the importance of the instructional core, making sure that each of those leaders has a common understanding, a framework, common language that we are using to engage in discussion about what excellence looks like for our Leominster Public Schools. So I understand that each of the schools have a different profile and perhaps a different vision and mission. But I think we all at those three schools have something that we have in common. And so if there is that one thing that we can define and concentrate on, monitor our progress, provide professional learning for those principals and leaders as we move, again, to center excellent instruction, going into classrooms, looking at observations, unpacking that data, figuring out how we might be able to provide feedback, that constructive feedback to our educators to ensure that our students are, again, feeling engaged in the content, see themselves in the content and of course have opportunities to collaborate with one another. So I would say those ongoing conversations would be really important. One of the things that I discovered through my visit is that Leominster Public Schools is working with Lynch Leadership Academy and these micro academies as well as Atune. And so that framework really already exists here in the Leominster Public Schools across schools and not just the high schools. And so I think it would be important to leverage that understanding and knowledge that has already been built. But again, I think we could focus around a common issue grounded in a co-constructed vision for excellence. And then again, making sure that we are progress monitoring, going back and forth between the schools, sharing best practices and celebrating our successes.
Rush?
Thank you.
Please discuss your approach to school safety, speaking of your own experience.
And reflecting in my time in the Boston Public Schools, as the principal of the high school, I thought it was really important to have a daily huddle with my dean, operations staff as well as our SROs. Again, thinking about what we are focused on for the day is really important that we can collaborate around that vision. And so when I think about, it's not only the physical safety, but it's that psychological safety that's also really important. So I would want to make sure that, again, my, my staff, my operational staff is building relationships with our young people, that we don't only engage with them and their families when there's an issue, but that we are supporting them, we are encouraging them. It's important that, again, that mentoring take place on a daily basis, whether it's in the hallway, whether it's on the field or in the classroom or the cafeteria. So I would say that maintaining those ongoing conversations on a daily basis is important. We want to ensure the physical safety of the building, of course. If there is an issue, everyone should be aware of what the protocol is to get that word out and respond. We want to ensure that families are also on board. If there is an emergency or an issue, we want to ensure that there is a process to make sure that we are keeping them in the fold. But of course, making sure that our staff is aware of it as well. So I would say that maintaining those open lines of communication during ongoing meetings makes sure that we are, again, all rowing the boats in the same direction, making sure that students feel safe, that families trust us with their students every day and that we are maintaining open communications, both with families, with our staff and most importantly, with our operational staff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Wow. So we all know, I mean, from the past interview, that everyone understands the legal responsibilities, statutory responsibilities of the school committee and superintendent. But can you talk a little bit about your relationship, what your vision is, what your style is with the school committee?
I think it would be important to engage in conversations around expectations of how we communicate. I think it's important to establish what those rules of engagement are, to also create some community agreements about how, again, we engage. I maintain an open door policy. I am visible and approachable. I am collaborative by nature and have a shared leadership style. So I would hope that we would leverage that and work together as we, again, are solving problems for our Leominster Public School students and meeting the needs of our families. One example that comes to mind immediately for me, he had a retreat with our school committee a couple of years ago and we found that to be a great use of time, thinking about carving out the vision for the district and, again, identifying exactly how we were going to monitor success. So I would hope that this committee would be interested in engaging in a retreat so that we can align our understandings around excellence and, again, of how we engage with one another. We share those same values, I believe, and we also, again, want to be sure that all of our Leominster Public School students' needs are met. So that's what I, how I would respond to this question is to say that we, again, have an opportunity to co-construct. We have an opportunity to dream together and hold one another accountable if those agreements are not being met.
You're up. As our superintendent, what would be your vision for our district?
Yeah, there are a lot of bright spots in Leominster. You know, as I think about the work that you're doing around equity, creating a committee to define exactly what equity means, outlining that in the strategic plan, elevating that in the Student Opportunity Act application that you submitted to DESI, that is really important. And so I believe that the pump is primed in order for us to get to the next phase of success for the Leominster Public Schools. I think that instruction should always be at the core. When we're thinking about what's happening in the classroom, what task is placed before students? What are the educators asking our students to do on a daily basis? I think that task analysis helps us to understand what expectations educators have of our students. Whether that be spoken or unspoken, students have an understanding of what expectations of educator may have for them. So in terms of my vision, I would say that instruction would be at the core. I would want to ensure that all educators understand what excellent instruction looks like, that that is something that we create together. It is something that we hold ourselves accountable to. We go into classrooms, we discuss patterns and trends that arise. But that is the most important thing for me. Also, I think joy is important. I hope that students in Leominster find joy in their learning on a daily basis. But I also know that students find joy after hours, whether it's on, again, athletics or arts, whatever it might be. That joy should be a factor in their day. And if a student doesn't feel that level of joy, I want to be sure that we make those changes necessary in order for them, again, to feel a sense of belonging in this community. And so that's how I would respond to your question around vision. It would be guided in thinking about ways we could leverage frameworks to ensure that instruction, again, is at the, at the core.
Thank you. And now the best question of the night. Good question.
So why do you?
You know, as I was sitting in the conference room waiting to be called in, I noticed there was something on the board and it talked about Leominster leading with heart. And that truly resonated with me. So when I think about coming here today, I said that I, again, I'm not from Leominster, but I want to be of Leominster. I believe that we do, in fact, have shared values. I, I noticed that at every school committee meeting, you read a statement about the importance of centering students and then working in the best interests of students and families. It's not just a statement. I believe that that is truly what you believe. That resonates with me. And so I would want to bring that alive here in Leominster. Like I said, there are bright spots here. I think the pump is primed for the next level of success. When I look at some of the MCAS results, we're finding that there are successes in certain grade levels. We want to be sure to understand what's working in some places so that we're able to share those best practices across the district. So thinking about the MCAS results, thinking about the graduation rates. When I looked at the site visit from 2012, the graduation, graduation rate was around ninety-one percent and it remains around ninety-one percent. So that stability is really important. There's stability and the leadership. I think it's great, again, that we have focused on instruction, partnering with Lynch and Atune. I think it's great that we are focused on getting into classrooms, thinking about equity, thinking about culturally responsiveness. So I say all of that to say, that is why I would want to come to Leominster, because of the core values that we both share and thinking about ways that we can bring Leominster to the next level. And of course, it goes without saying that the cultural diversity, of course, of the city is appealing to me. My experience in the Boston Public Schools will translate directly into the Leominster Public Schools. So I would say all of those things together is why I'm here today. Leominster is the only superintendent role that I applied for because, again, I looked for a district that is aligned with my core values and, again, a district that is ready for the next phase of success.
You have any questions for us?
I do.
We have time.
I wonder if you could talk about what success looks like at the end of year one for whomever is chosen as superintendent for the Leominster Public Schools?
Just to be able to figure out where all these buildings are. I mean, you've come from a system bigger than that. I, I think initially, when we had the first interviews, none of us believed that any superintendent is gonna know everything. But we're looking for a leader and it's gonna take a while just to get in and meet everyone, meet, get out into the community. I think at the end of year one is, is, is evaluating where we're at and then sort of putting a plan as to working with us and the staff as to, okay, where do we go from here? We're in a good spot. As you said, the pump is primed. It's a good place to be. You're not coming into a system that is in chaos and it's, there's so many issues that you wish you didn't apply for the job. That's not the case. It, it's, you know, we're in a good spot. And so anything else, I mean, that's, a year goes by quick.
Use the families app to get to where we're going, to have some transparency, to hold people accountable, but celebrate everyone's successes and to, you know, really acknowledge the hard work that's being done, you know, by each student so that we can get them to their optimal level of where they need to be and embracing, you know, our successes, our diversity, which can be both challenging and wonderful at the same time. Have lots to offer and we need, you know, somebody who's gonna embrace that and, you know, help us move, you know, forward. We're been moving forward for a long time, but we've got some more movement to do.
We're good adapters. You know how to adapt.
Pivot.
The hardest part, the hardest part, hardest part is trying to define what, what is meant by success. So, you know, everyone's saying we're doing good, we're going this and this. But if you have to say it, then you're missing something. Success is not what you have done. Success is where you're going. Success is always amalgamated with change. If you don't accept change, you won't have success. It's as simple as that. And as I was saying earlier, we're sometimes forced against our will to reinvent ourselves. The school district, the individuals at this table. We have, we are forced, we are forced to reinvent ourselves consistently. And as I've said before, oftentimes against our will. That's, that's what we have to understand and we don't want to understand that because it scares us. It scares us to find out that, huh, we're not at all what we thought we were. That's it.
Maybe to touch on that a little bit, it's that whomever we choose, the three finalists are not local to Leominster. So whomever we choose has to have and be prepared to have a strong backbone because I want you to bring your outsider perspective and, you know, take a look at what maybe we could be doing differently. But also be prepared that there is gonna be some pushback.
But also be prepared that there is going to be some pushback to that.
I'll have opinions, as you're trying to say.
Yeah. And so whomever it is needs to be ready to hear that we love you and you're not from Leominster. You know?
Everybody has an opinion on everything from ever, from A to Z, including how we design the traffic pattern up on the front of a lot of towers. But everybody wants a way in on everything, no matter what it is.
And I came here 30 years ago, someplace else, and I taught here 30. And this is now, as I said before, this is my city. My children were educated here. I started at the elementary level, went to the middle school and the high school and taught in the vocational program. So I feel that it's a good place to be, but again, you know, it's a flexibility. It's being able to evolve as the community and the people around you evolve. And then you can see, looking at the total picture, the perspective and where we're going with our students, because that's the important thing is where are we going with them, with them? And how can we move them forward and make them successful as they become adults?
Anyone else?
I would just add that I don't know what they call it, the profile of a graduate. You know, the, the success, how I see it is, is are we setting our students up for to be a productive member of society? And I'd love to see that, you know, it's not always about college, but that the number of students that are going into further training, two-year, two-year degrees, certifications, anything that continues that education and, and, you know, makes them more valuable members of society. And I think it's, it's that, but how do we, how do we measure that early on so that we get, we can get to that point where that's where kids end up as adults?
Some students know exactly where they're going.
Right.
Right away, like, you know, second grade, like on a mission. Some don't. And, and I've always been more of a Montessori kind of person, hands-on, show me how to do it and I'll do it that way the rest of my life, even if it's the wrong way, you showed me the way and I'm going to, that's the way I'm going to do it. Yeah, that's right. Even if it's the wrong way, that's the way I'm going to do it because that's the way you showed me. But some people just learn that way. We learn differently. And so there are many, many more opportunities. In Leominster, you could go into the military, you could work at a factory and, I don't know, what was the other one? Or construction. There are so many more opportunities today that these students, I say it every time. These students today have more opportunities than anyone has ever had coming out of Leominster High School system. And, and that's a good thing. But sometimes you have to show them. You can't tell them, you actually have to bring them to it. And so exposing students, you know, in the first year, coming up with a plan to get students in the staff, you know, the dreaded professional development days, why can't we just go out and bring the teachers and staff out to these different, you know, occupations and let them see what actually goes on? That's, that's how a lot of people, I ask people all the time, how did you end up doing this? And you're like, I don't know, I saw it and sounded interested and took a job doing it and went and got my degree, everything else. So.
It always goes back to what do you want to be when you grow up?
Happy.
I don't know. I don't know what I want to be. I don't know what I want to be when I grow up.
Happy. How about happy?
Always been told I'm a juvenile.
Are you happy?
Am I happy? I don't know what the word happy is. It begins with the letter H and not Y. What is happy?
I'm happy. You make us happy.
Are you happy because you're happy or are you saying, are you just saying that?
No, I'm happy.
It's, is it a philosophical question? Who knows? I know. I didn't, hey.
Sounds like a song, happy. Yeah. You have any other questions? We've got to a late clock.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
We're just trying to make you laugh.
I know, I appreciate that. I mean, I do have one other question because I, I like to end on a good note. I wonder what would be your one bright spot or celebration about the new, I'm sorry, about the Leominster Public Schools? What would you brag about?
I think the diversity of the public schools is very diverse, but very a family, I have to say. All the schools work well together. We all communicate well together. The committee works well together. I'd have to say the whole district, committee, schools, I think we're just a big family that wants to, wants what's best for the students of the school district.
I agree, but I also think our high school is really a gem and, you know, it's kids sometimes struggle through elementary and middle school. I think this high school is such to so many a welcoming place of where they can really find themselves and offer so many opportunities. Whether it's sports or our E, the art wing or the trade program, I think it, this building really, I think kids see it as, you know, maybe the outsiders just see it as high school. But I think in reality, this building is where so many kids find themselves. And I think, I think that's a jewel.
For a superintendent, we don't want to be the superintendent. We let the superintendent do the superintendent's job. That doesn't always happen. And the other thing is, we all respect each other's opinions. And, and you don't always get that in a school committee. We may disagree, we may disagree. But at the end of the day, one thing I'll say is, everyone here does what they think is best for the kids. They have no, no, everybody leaves their own personal agenda at the door. It creeps in once in a while. How can you, you know, it happens. But for the most part, that's not so usual in, in school committees. And I don't expect you to comment on that. I've just, you asked a question. You asked a question, which was, you know, what do you see as some of the bright spots? Anyone else?
Just, I think that people take pride in, I see so many people, I love, like I coach soccer and I love wearing my Leominster. Like it's, you take pride in the logo and saying that you're from Leominster. I think there's just, as many people have said, it's, people have tremendous pride in it. It's, we like going places and telling people where we're from, so.
You meet somebody. No, I don't care where you go. You always meet somebody from Leominster. And it might not always be the, the most positive experience, but it's an experience.
Well, even though I'm not from Leominster, I have felt truly welcomed by everyone I have met here. I am grateful for the opportunity. I'm grateful for the leaders who opened their doors and classrooms to me. I am grateful to Xavier, a second grade student who engaged me in conversation around tarantulas and scorpions. That was a phenomenal experience. So based on my experiences and my skills that I bring to the table, I just want to end by saying I lead with heart, I lead with passion and I lead with pride. And I think again, that Leominster is in the right place and choosing the right leader at the right time will yield positive results. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. And she yelled at me because I wasn't on time for everything. Renee, you want to tell everybody how you got yelled at me several times? Yeah, she yelled at me because I wasn't on time. Wait a minute here. What's going on? Who's doing the interview? Nice to meet you. Oh, she's just trying to keep me on time.
What time are we asked?
Resess, please. Anyone would like to make the motion?
I make.
Yes, and Sal said, yes, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, Robin.
I know.
So what's it cost you to make that? Who said it? What do you sell it for, forty dollars? And how much you want for guns?
Birthday, Tyler. Is that your birthday?
Greg. I'm watching.
Oh, that's right.
Hi, good evening. Great, how are you all?
Good.
Good.
Um, just for logistics purpose, the closer you can keep the mic, or it'll keep you from having to follow it in. Just so everybody can hear and then they're doing a video too.
It's my teacher voice.
Pull that one out, yeah. All right, well, anyway, good evening and thank you. And thanks for coming early, for being efficient tonight and we're ahead of ourselves. We're not used to that. In any event, I have the first question and then we'll just go around the table. My first question is, um, how would you work to become part of the Lemonster community in supporting our school district?
Sure, uh, so I believe that, um, when you're a leader in the school system, responsibility to go to the events at schools. And so I would, uh, try to go to as many events as possible. Um, in my sitting role of assistant superintendent, I do that as well. So, um, you know, I love to go to football games and soccer games and sporting events as well as show choir and, um, moving on ceremonies, graduations. Um, I want to be a fabric of the environment in which I work. And so, um, that would be my goal here is to be at as many events as possible. Um, I also have been in Lemonster frequently recently. Um, and I, I've enjoyed going to restaurants here. I've enjoyed, um, you know, going to, uh, the park, Doyle Park. I enjoy, um, in past, uh, years going to Showland Farms and, um, some of the events that they've had there. Uh, so I think it's important not only to be a part of the school community, but I think it's also important to be a part of the greater community so that you can make connections with families and stakeholders. So that would be what I would like to do if I was invited to be, uh, the next superintendent.
Thank you. Greg?
Hi. How would you approach the district's desire to improve and maintain high academic achievement? And how would you sustain access to, uh, to advanced classwork?
Sure, um, so currently in my role, um, I am, uh, the assistant superintendent and my responsibility is curriculum instruction and assessment. Uh, so I have been fortunate enough to have the experience is of, um, looking at our advanced placement courses and looking at other opportunities throughout commu- our community, uh, to expand upon, um, dual enrollment programming and early college programming, all of which provide students with this sim- a similar, um, experience and, uh, a weighted grade point average above a four point oh, which helps to support students when they're applying for colleges. So, um, the first step I would, uh, look to see what Lemonster is doing well in this area because I know they already have a lot in place. Um, but then I would also love to contribute to the team with some of the ideas that I and experiences that I've had to help perhaps grow programming or expand on programming. But I would first love to get into the community and, and look at what's working well and, um, what ideas are already in place and how I could help to provide my experiences in that area to help support opportunities for growth.
Thank you, Mr. Ron.
Good evening, Robin. Please speak to the needs of adult learners and how you work to address them.
Adult learners, sure.
We already had this conversation earlier.
Sure.
At that last, other than.
Yeah, uh, so I think that, uh, you know, adult learners, depending on, um, what we're referring to, we're referring to educators. Um, I would look to, uh, see what the needs were for professional development and then seek out experts within our community and perhaps providers outside of our community that can help support whatever the need is for the growth and the learning of the adults within our school district. Uh, if we're talking about community members, um, and, uh, and talking about adult education opportunities for community members, uh, I think that we, I have, um, done a lot of work within my district with our, um, community around, um, providing opportunities for adults to cr- get credentials. So, uh, GED programs, um, adult education programs that provide, um, background in learning for adults to be able to go to community college. Um, also, um, English as a second language programming for adults that are new to our country that want to be able to pursue higher education but do not, does not have the, um, background. Uh, so I think that there's lots of ways to support adult learners. Um, I think there's also ways to support our graduates that have credentialed through us, whether it be through, um, the, um, technical programming or students who have received a diploma in our mainstream program and provide opportunities to hear from them, hear how they're doing and look to see what else we need to do to improve our programming to support their ability to, um, either get, um, access a career or a college entry.
Thank you. Thank you. Sal?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So special education is particular challenge because of the complexity of rules, service needs and students and parent concerns. When you assess the effectiveness of your special education programs, what are the some of the criteria you use?
Sure, um, so there's quite a lot of criteria. I've been fortunate enough to oversee our special education department in the, in the school system I'm in currently. Um, and so oftentimes when I'm looking at success, I'm looking at dropout rates, graduation rates. Um, how many students with individual education plans attend four-year or two-year, uh, college programs? How many students complete those programs? Um, how many students have received vocational education and have been able to obtain a job in their certification area? But I also look at the student from the start or the entry into the individual education plan and how they're progressing over time. So we look at things like transitions from elementary school to middle school and how the student is doing in the environment as it has changed. So in elementary school, students. So in elementary school, students tend to stay within the classroom with one teacher. Then they transition to a middle school and they go between multiple classes. It's important to look at how a student is doing on an individual education plan when that transition occurs. Then there's another transition that occurs from middle school into high school. And that system for the student is different as well. And so there's the transition plan that we look at over time, which is really important because we want our students to be successful all the way through. And then there is the statistics around graduation rates, dropout rates, attendance rates, student engagement. All of those pieces factor into student success. Thank you.
What is your approach to extracurricular activities? And how would you support them in the Lemonster Public Schools?
So I think that extracurricular activities are extremely important. As someone who, when I was in high school, played multiple sports, it was something sometimes that encouraged me to go to school every day, right? And so I think having as much diversity as you can for extracurricular is really important because students have a lot of interests. And, you know, when you're young, you're not sure which item it is that you're going to really want to pursue long-term or stick with. So I think that having lots of clubs available after school for students with various interests, I think having as much sporting programs as you can have, fine arts, all of it's important. And however we can sustain that is what we need to pursue in order to do that. I think that especially in high school, we tend to see students disengaged. And I think that any way that you can try to have someone feel joyful and engaged in their learning, we should do it. And there's lots of grant funding out there for those purposes, so thank you.
Yep. It's my turn, right? Okay, can everybody hear me? Because I'm getting complaints that people can't hear me, which is, thank you, thank you very much. Alright. We won't go there. You're right, thank you, Emily. How do you view the social and emotional well-being of children in the context of establishing a high-performing school population?
Sure. So I think that we should always have high expectations for academics. That's what we do as a school system, we're educating students. But we also have a lot of mental health and well-being issues that have risen in particular since COVID-19. And so I think that it's important to have a mix of services. We should have the ability to provide students with resources for mental health and wellness. We should be able to have social workers that are there to support and counsel students. But in no way should that affect our academic standards and what we would expect for students to achieve at a grade level. So, in my opinion, I think it's really important to have the services available and be proactive about providing supports and services. But in no way should that affect our expectations around achievement or around providing students access to the standards. There has to be a balance and it's our responsibility to provide it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, welcome. Multicultural experiences are much more than just race, language or place of origin. What experiences do you have that relate to multicultural experiences? Especially when some cultures have different values than your own. How do these experiences affect the way you work?
Well, so I am from Lowell, Massachusetts, and I was born and raised in Lowell. I went to Lowell Public Schools. And I've spent my career in urban education, thirty-two years teaching or being an administrator. Urban education is oftentimes a very diverse environment for students. In the district where I'm teaching, where I'm an Assistant Superintendent, we, there are sixty-nine languages spoken in our district. So multiculturalism is really important. As someone who's in charge of the academic portion of my school system, I've spent a lot of time incorporating culturally responsive materials into the curriculum. I think that the only way that someone learns is being able to identify with the materials that they're reading or that they're experiencing. And so it's really important to be able to provide those resources within our curriculum. And it's part of the reason why I was interested in coming to Lemonster. When I looked at what Lemonster was offering as far as strategic plan, the vision and the curriculum, it was a lot of reflection around equity and culturally responsive materials. And so my experiences have been that, you know, I've always worked in an environment where there are students representing lots of ethnicities, lots of cultures, lots of races. And I want to always be able to be sure that that is represented in the materials and the experiences that they have. The other thing is that it's really important for translation services to be available for our families and for our students. I think I said this in the initial interview. Oftentimes, people will rely on translation services like Google and other things. There's a lot lost in translation when you use items like that. And for families and for students, it's critical that we don't lose anything in translation. And so I think it's really important that there's always not only materials that students can relate to, but there are people who can speak languages that our students speak and can translate so that people, families and students are understanding what the expectations are, what the requirements are for success. And so for me, I think it's a critical element. And I was thrilled to see that it's throughout all of the strategic vision and plan, the Student Opportunity Act that Lemonster produced, the translators that are available, Portuguese and Spanish. I think that all of those items are critically important for the success of the school district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lemonster has three high schools operating under one roof. How would you support and sustain the work of each to serve all the students in the district?
So, you know, I think that again, it sort of speaks to the offerings that we provide our students so that they're engaged. And so when I look at having three high schools operating under one roof and how to support and sustain the work of each to serve our students, it's really getting to know the leaders, it's getting to know the teachers and it's getting to know the students and understanding what they're doing, what students are asking for and working together collectively to ensure that we're providing programming that students are engaging in. Where I am currently, we have a high school that services thirty-three hundred students. We also have smaller high schools that provide something different for students that need a different learning experience so they're successful. And we also collaborate through an after dark program with our Greater Lowell Technical School so that students in our comprehensive high school can come in late, take the standard courses that are required for graduation and then go to our regional vocational school and get certified in auto tech and other things that we don't offer in our comprehensive high school. I think it's critical that we provide students with what they feel they need to be successful. And again, students are young, they need to be able to explore. They need to be able to try different things. So I think the more options we have, the more successful we're going to be. And so I would support whatever options students are looking for and whatever staff needs to be able to provide that. Thank you.
Josh?
Let's discuss your approach to school safety, speaking of your own experience.
Sure, so school safety is one of those things that I think preparation is extraordinarily important. And so, you know, as someone who was a building principal for many years, an assistant principal prior to that, and then an Assistant Superintendent, I've been very involved in all of our preparedness training. And so when I think about safety, I think about, number one, preventative measures, right? So making sure that your facilities are locked down, making sure that the facility is safe, making sure you're connected with your community support agencies, whether it's fire, police, et cetera. And then also making sure that you're providing mental health and wellness supports to students and staff. Those are preventative, right? But then there's this element of preparedness that you have to have. And that's the work that's done prior to, you know, the start of school where, you know, you have plans for any kind of experience that you might have that is an emergency, lockdowns, hard lockdowns, soft lockdowns, et cetera. And you have a manual or you provide people with directions for how you would respond to those kinds of things. With that, you would also have drills and scenario option-based practices to make sure that if there was ever a situation, you've prepared for it. Safety is not one of those things that you want to do, you want to plan for or deal with after an event. You want to make sure you're well-prepared ahead of time. And again, it's in collaboration with all of your support agencies within the community. And then from there, there is responsive training where people know what to do if there was anything that ever happened and how to handle it. Social workers are, you know, set up in a strategic way so that they know how to respond if anything happened. And then there is the communication process and being really well-prepared to communicate with staff, families, community if there was ever an event. But it's, you know, I have a lot of experience in this area and I could probably go on forever about it. But again, it really is about assessing what's going on currently, making sure that everything is safe and having a really good preparedness plan ahead of time. But again, it's not something a school district would do by itself. It's something that you would do with all of your community partners. Thank you.
Okay.
Y'all understand that? Interview that we did initially, you know, the legal definition of what the superintendent's roles, duties, responsibilities are, and the same with the school committee. But can you talk about your relationship or how you anticipate your relationship to be with the school committee?
Sure. So my relationship with the school committee I see as critically important. As someone who's been an Assistant Superintendent for eight years now, I attend regularly school committee meetings and subcommittee meetings. You know, write responses to motions, et cetera. But what I have always felt is that school committee members are working for their constituents. And so if constituents bring things forward, it's their responsibility to bring it forward to me. It helps me, if I am your next superintendent, understand what's going on within the community and what it is that the community wants and then look to accommodate that. And so I see the relationship as extraordinarily important because you are the voice of the community and you are providing me with the information that I need so that I am able to meet the needs of the community well. So I would see it as a very strong partnership and an important one to help me lead a school district that satisfies our community.
Thank you. Tyler?
As our superintendent, what would be your vision for our district?
So as a superintendent, my vision would be to be able to provide all students with what they need to be successful. And that's not always college, that could be career. And so for me, it's important to provide guidance and work as collaboratively as possible with staff and students and families to be able to provide a student with whatever it is they want, whatever it is they need to be successful in life. And again, that can be very different. But it's important that every student have access to the standards, that classes are engaging and joyful and safe. And so that I also see as a really important part of the role is to make sure that students are engaged, there's some joy in what they're doing, they want to come to school and the environment is safe. Thank you.
And the best question. Knight?
Sure. So, and for some people, this is a repeat because some of you were part of the initial interview. But I have been, as I said, an Assistant Superintendent in a very large district. The district has over fifteen thousand students. And so I decided a couple of years ago that I wanted to pursue a superintendency. And so I decided to embark in a program that allowed me an experience with a cohort of people across the country that wanted to also pursue a superintendency. It's the Superintendent Leadership Association, Leadership Institute through the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents. And so that allowed me to go on weekends to meet with the cohort that was pursuing a superintendency and go to different locations across the country and listen to other superintendents, sitting superintendents talk about how they're improving their school districts and sort of what they're embarking on. And we did a lot of problem solving, a lot of scenario-based decisions around what could happen if you were a superintendent. And it was a great opportunity for me to learn a lot about the role of superintendent. But I also have always been very focused on diverse urban communities and in particular, communities that see discrepancies amongst marginalized populations. And so there's been a lot of superintencies since I've graduated from this program that have come available in Massachusetts. I don't apply for them. When I started looking at some of the more recent ones this year, I saw Lemonster and then I started looking at the demographics and I started looking at some of the things that the school district is focused on in the strategic plan and also the Student Opportunity Act document that's on the website. And I started making connections with my work. You know, the Student Opportunity Act submission from Lemonster is focusing on students that are high-need students in poverty, students that are designated or identifying as Hispanic and students with individual education plans. That's where I've focused a lot of my efforts over the years. And so I felt like I would be able to contribute to Lemonster. I felt like my experiences and the work that I have done, I would be able to be a member of a team that could contribute to moving Lemonster forward. There's great things going on here. The more I dig in, the more I learn, the more I see a welcoming community, a community that's vibrant and very engaged. And that's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for a community that I can feel a part of the fabric of. But also it's important for me to ensure that wherever I'm going, I am aligned with the vision and the mission and that I can bring skills to the table to support the team. And so when I looked at Lemonster's demographics and I looked at all of the things that are part of how Lemonster is moving forward, I feel like I can contribute to that and I can support the growth. And that's important to me. I wouldn't go somewhere or I wouldn't apply somewhere where I didn't feel like I wouldn't go somewhere or I wouldn't apply somewhere where I didn't feel like I could be a part of a team. And so, that's why Lemonster.
Good question. Any questions for us at all?
Yes. Actually, one of my questions was if whoever your next superintendent is, where would you want to see the district in a year?
And anybody?
So you.
I don't know if I'm speaking for everybody, so I can only suggest that it, it's a new person, none of the candidates live here, none of them work in the system. So I think we're of the mindset that it's going to take some time to understand, get a feel for things, get a feel for people, get out into the community, get all the things that happen when you first take on a new position. And we don't expect the superintendent to know everything. But, you know, to begin to start to look at, do conversations with us, to start to look at, you know, our you know, various plans that we have in the city and in the school department and start to, you know, put plans together. You know, we're, we're in a, in a good spot. There's not turmoil, turmoil or chaos in the system, so we're in a good spot. So we really can start to work on being proactive on a number of areas that we just haven't had the time. Because we have been sort of cleaning things up in the past. Is that a good way to?
I, I would, I, you know, superintendent coming in, I would like them to do kind of a SWOT analysis, you know, what what are the strengths, what are the weaknesses, what are the opportunities, what are the threats? And, and really prioritize them. They just come to us with what these are the, you know, I've done my analysis of everything and, and this is what I feel are in those buckets, right? And these are the things that I want to prioritize. And, you know, once we understand what those priorities are, we should be setting our goals around that and supporting you. And I think it's, it's, you know, that, that's what we want to, I want to see is, is that we've got the priorities and then we're aligning our goals with that to support you and support the school. So, I think we all have our ideas about what the priorities are, but fresh, fresh eyes and fresh ideas are certain.
Really establishing those relationships and connections, knowing your staff, what their strengths are, what needs to be built on, understanding the student demographics and we're, not that you would know every student, but, you know, kind of, you know, where each student is at, partnering with the members, although obviously with the school committee. But really to, you know, come up with it, like Greg said, it's sort of a mutual vision and, you know, a plan on how do we get from, you know, point A to point B. And always keeping in the forefront, student achievement, you know, sort of equity for all students. And, you know, that success is going to look very different child to child, and that's okay. But to really involve, you know, that are important to each of us.
Great.
Other question? If you have.
No, that gives me a good sense. I was, I was really pleased to see that you have so many staff that have been with the district a really long time. You know, when I went out to schools, I met many people who've been here for twenty years, thirty years. And so, I think for a new superintendent coming in, having that knowledge base, to your point, especially where they're not necessarily in the community right now, is quite a gift. So, that was, that was exciting. I don't have other questions. Do you have any other questions for me?
I do. I got two of them. Okay, I won't ask. Will the Bruins win?
Fingers crossed. We didn't, we didn't ask that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. No. Tonight's, tonight's the night.
Why I'm not going to watch or listen to it, don't tell me.
No, don't say that.
Don't want to say that because I.
Don't even say they're winning. Like that's. We're losing the series, so.
Say it, don't say it.
Reverse jinx.
It does. Superstition does matter.
Now, now what do we do next? I don't know if you could ask her that, though.
Are you asking me that?
Yeah.
Oh, all right, good. I was gonna say, if you're asking the candidates, I'm sorry. Um, I felt like that was sort of like your next step question. So, yes, so the, the, the thing that needs to happen next is that several of you did visit the home districts of each of the three candidates. And it's important for those of you who had that experience to bring that to the rest of the committee. So that was part of my email that I sent you, that if you had done that, to be prepared to speak briefly to that. This is really about, what did you observe about their leadership? And anything that you think is important to share with your colleagues.
I'll go first for.
Whoever wants to go first? Don't be shy.
Oh yeah, I'll go first. So Melissa and I did go to Lowell, met with the different people of the Lowell School Department. You know, the feedback we got from everyone was she was always involved, very hands-on. During COVID, she was into the next day making packets for all the students, getting the, getting involved, making sure everybody had everything they need. Very well involved with the community, working with the police department to create programs for the students. It, it, what was the, the coaching program with the police? Take your microphone.
It proactively created and worked with the police department to partner police officers with the coaching staff at the middle schools and creating programs to proactively create relationships before kids got into high school and generally some of the tougher times of their lives. So that they got to know each other and form connections. They also had a police academy and she partnered the police academy with the academic side so that in the morning, the kids did academics. And then in the afternoon, they did sort of like the police academy part of it. And she was able to sell it as really it's full-day summer programming for kids. And parents aren't saying no to that really over the summer, right? You get, and you're getting the best of both worlds. She had a, I'm going to call it an agenda, but a structure and a schedule planned out for the day. We met with teachers, union members, special ed directors, the attorney, former superintendent.
And the district attorney fitted with the nineteen years he's been complaining against her.
Yeah. And without ask, even having to ask some of the questions we went with, I don't want it to seem like it, but it's like they came with planned answers, but they almost all echoed the same sort of comments about community and team building and advocating right down the line. I, so not having met the other candidates for long, I wasn't sure what I was going to be meeting with, but I gotta say, like, having left that day, I felt like she their feedback was amazing, like they said it'll be a mistake if you don't hire her. We're sorry to see her go.
To Melissa's point, we had, what, we went in with like five, six different questions. We were asking each person we met. And again, they don't know what the questions were. Every single one said the same exact thing. Well, her being team-oriented, disciplined, being there for the students, be, you know, creating programs that weren't there for the students and just being really hands-on and involved in all avenues, not just, you know, with staff, students, being there, you know, we met with a couple of principals who said she's always been there for them.
And then just informally, we, we had our meeting in sort of the administrative building for the day. And then we went over to one of the elementary schools later. And they all said in our earlier meeting, and then it continued through to the afternoon, everyone knows her. It is very much a Lemonster feel, like as you're walking through the community, everyone knows her and is, hey, how are you doing? She knew this one, how's your child? She knew every child or parent that we came across, she knew who they were. I, I was impressed.
It was very. In my opinion.
Jen? Well, did somebody else go with you?
All by myself. So I.
I take it personally.
So I did, I went to see Dr. McIntyre. And again, same situation, they all, they didn't know the questions, but I feel like everybody just echoed the same answers for everything. Open door policy, very welcoming, he knows his students, he's very much there for his staff. I'm similar to what he even said today, that he's, like, he will, you know, text him and he'll call you right back. He's always one, one of the things they had mentioned about him in a crisis, he's always one step ahead of it, whether it's actually communicating out to the parents or the staff, he's very communicative. He's, you know, I'm not sure where he comes from, but he would like be there in a heartbeat if he had to come back from like his house to the school. If there was like an issue at the school from like a sports game, those kind of things. Everybody said it would, you know, again, that it would be a great loss to our school, just like that they did lose him. I did ask, like maybe an area that they thought some growth would be. And one of the, a lot of the answers were his decision-making. He always leads them to a decision. He never gives them the decision, I guess. So, but they say in hindsight, looking back at it, they enjoyed that because they learned how to grow from that and make that decision on their own. But in the, in the thick of it, they were like hoping to get a haircut answer. But again, he had a complete agenda for me all day, you know, I had students, school committee members, I had, oh my goodness, lots of principals. I had the fire department, I had the chief, I had the police department. So, and everybody kind of echoed the same thing, that he's just a very nice guy, very caring, decisive, makes her open door policies, very like well-spoken. Again, it kind of echoes exactly the same.
That guy, in the first interview, he said he would be on site within thirty minutes.
And I went to Newton, Newton. And similar, I mean, the candidates sound a lot like each other. And the one thing I was impressed with is it wasn't a love fest. She didn't set it up, she invited the entire, every assistant superintendent, every principal. It was, it was everybody. So that if somebody did, you know, felt like they're obligated to be there and they didn't want to say something, they could have. And they didn't. And I think the thing that stuck out the most to me was good listener and a real caring listener, like, I'm really listening. You made me think of things a little bit differently than I did before. So there have been, and they all said the same thing, when there's something big and they all look at her as a leader now. Like, no, no, we gotta go to her, she's in. And, and then obviously they had a strike, everybody knows about that. And every one of them said, at the end of it, she's the one that reached out and went to the schools to talk to, you know, because there's some scars. It's a bad feeling, it takes a while to get over that. And that she was the one that initiated that and went out. And, and they really felt that, you know, she was the leader within their school system, like, that's the person because she's not inflammatory. She really does care about what people think. She knows that, you know, here's a problem, it has to be resolved. We've got to move in this direction. What are your ideas about how do we do that? And that seemed to come from, from everybody. They were all sad to lose her, you know, they just, you know, if we have to lose her, you know, it'd be a hard void to, to fill. But that's the one thing I think that stuck out is a good listener, like a sincere, I really care. She understands, she worked in the, you know, in a tough school system, which she worked in, in Boston. But I think a lot of the candidate, you know, we're lucky, we got three good candidates. And, you know, everybody's had a chance to Google their names, the public, as well as us. And we were involved in some wild and not a peep, not a negative thing. But very involved in the community, always that person that's reaching out, signing up, volunteering, getting involved. And I asked the same question, when you go out in the supermarket, if you go out into the schools, do people know who you are? And, you know, the answer is yes. And that, and the other administrator said, if there's an issue that someone has, that's either personal or something that's important to them, she would be the person that they would go to. Themselves would go to her because they know that in the end, she would listen and and there would be an action plan and she'd be supportive and there'd be, you know, some execution. But also said she was tough. In other words, you know, she's not a pushover, she's very tough. And, but, you know, even asked questions like, hey, what happens, you know, the HR director was in, I'm like, well, what happens? Sometimes you know who people are, you have to make tough decisions and things don't work out, you gotta let them go or, you know, take disciplinary action. And like, oh no, she's absolutely solid on that. But in the meantime, she respects people's opinions and listens and, 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 but at the end of the day is holds people accountable. And she wants to be held accountable. And she did keep me on time all day. That was only, I was just a joke, you know how I am. So, when I said it, it, it was really good because she did, she had a lot of, she was respectful with everybody's time and myself. And we didn't eat, we just, she would work me right to lunch hour and, and, and it was a very good visit. And by the way, I was saying that Central High, it was an alternative school. She has a lot of influence in, in town. It wasn't the best of buildings, it wasn't anything but wonderful things going inside the building at her direction, which I was really impressed with. Less about the building and more of the content and the educational component. I'm leaving now.
Right, so with that in mind then, my, my proposal to you would be that you do, for those of you who were on the the screening committee, what we would sort of do to, to take the temperature of the room was to start with a straw poll. And so I would suggest doing that, which is to have Ms. Silverman do a roll call. Have you each just say the last name of the person that you would move forward as the superintendent? And then essentially that then gives you and I, give us, would give us all an idea of where you are at this point.
I think, are we in agreement? We've got three really good candidates. A hard decision, but we have to make, it can only be one if we could just put them all in the one.
It's, I, I think they're all great. I don't know if they're the next super. And my, my, so this is, I, and maybe the, the perspective you guys have when your business were there. I, I was a little disappointed that we didn't, we got a lot of what I felt like was kind of textbook answers in a lot of cases. Not a lot of substance in terms of, well, this is what I did in my district. There was, there was a few here and there, but to me, I didn't hear about, this is how I've solved this problem in my district. With the exception of, of Kevin, I, like I see both Renee and Robin to be great assistant superintendents. But did I see the, that leadership that there's nobody else to make this decision, I've got to make it type? I don't know. I, I don't, you know, I, I'm not sure.
I disagree. I felt that Desmond had a handle on a lot of very difficult types of decisions. The demographics in her community are similar to ours and multiplied by ten. She is a product of an urban, a very, very difficult city. A lot of, as she said, sixty-nine different languages. She created all these programs. She was very specific, Greg, in terms of the programs that she created. That's how I felt. The more I listened to this person, whether it was the first interview or this one, I just felt from the beginning that she was an excellent fit, that she was very real, that she could communicate her. um, that she could communicate her ideas and her philosophies very succinctly. I didn't feel after having taught and been in this profession for over forty years, I felt that her responses were not simply jargon and textbook. I felt that her, again, her background and the way she presented her information, I just felt that she was very solid and I would feel very comfortable with her being our superintendent.
In fairness, hold on, what, in fairness, in fairness, in many of the other interviews, and they become like sort of standard.
Right.
Can you give us an example? And we didn't ask those questions because everybody, if, if you work ten minutes, you should be able to give an example of something that happened. But that's not a general overview of everything you've ever done. So we, I think intentionally stayed away from, can you give me an example? You know what I'm saying? In other words, they could all give examples, but how do we know if that sort of resonates throughout their whole history? It's like, you know, do you like chocolate ice cream, vanilla, or do you like ice cream, you know? I mean.
To your point too, Dean, the questions weren't worded for them to give examples.
Right, right. We didn't word them to say, you know, what's your, like, yeah. My question was my question. I wanted to know how that person, uh, uh, you know, that candidate.
The only one with the experience was.
We just had to pass the budget and then we're, you know, they don't need us anymore. Are we people that might have a good idea that, you know, the superintendent might run with it? Oh, yeah, yeah. So I didn't ask what your personal, I mean, but we could have asked, what was your experience? We didn't.
I think we, we, well, I would have hoped it.
I'm not trying to change your mind. I'm just saying we did.
No, and I, and, and to be fair, I thought, um, Ms. Desmond was, was by far the best candidate out of all three. And I, and I, I still could be swayed. I'm not dead set. I'm trying to be, play devil's advocate here. But I, I mean, what I think we, what I wanted to try to get past was just somebody that interviews well. And that would have kind of helped, but, um, hearing, hearing the onsite visits certainly helped.
Well, there's only, I mean, there's only one person that actually does the job right now.
Correct.
The others are, are one of the many super, assistant superintendents within the district. So, right? I mean, that's, that's true.
Yeah.
One candidate, so.
And, you know, obviously if nobody thinks anybody is, then we can talk about an interim, you know, superintendeeship. But I don't know that we.
But if it's glaring, that's fair.
Right. I mean, I think we need to.
You want to do this by stand vote or you want to do it by name?
I think it'd be good to, to actually do a roll call and have each person name their, their top candidate.
This is the.
Yes, and I, I believe I, I would, I would agree with the chair who of course is, is going to some pains to make the point that I, I would agree. You do have three very good candidates. So please, so please don't think that because you are voting, you are naming one, that anyone is going to think that you think any lesser of the others. Um, it is, I agree that you have a strong, a strong three before you.
And I think if the candidates are watching, if they ever watch this, you put us in a really difficult. Cause we got three good candidates. And then, you know, one of us might be more partial because we made that visit.
Right. Absolutely. You have a stronger, you have a stronger connection.
I, I think, can I say this so that in case the candidates are watching, any one of them we could work with and no problem.
Just turn off the TV now and we'll call you.
We'll let you know later.
Right. This I liked about this, this one I liked about that, you know, and I think that's, you know, what you have to take into consideration. It's a tough decision.
All right, we're gonna do, we're gonna start with Ron.
I'll take my call.
Next.
Desmond.
That would make you. Yeah, I know you, you want, we can skip you from it if you want.
Desmond.
I'd be my call.
Desmond, Desmond.
Well, no, I'm just saying that we made it round one. So now we'll go back to. You can say whatever. That's the least part of I'll be here tonight. We had a schedule.
I, I agree with what Greg says. About concern. Not having superintendent experience and we have a superintendent in the field. That's a very strong security response experience. That's a really tough area to get someone up to speed. If we go with someone with that experience, we're gonna have to provide that leadership of talking about safety committee and things like that because no one mentioned that. They said, you know, collaborate those things, but no one said solidly start a safety committee and have these people meet together on a regular basis. Some people mentioned it in the first round, so it's really not fair to bring it up here, but, um, I think with that, I'd give that.
And I think that, um, our current superintendent wasn't a superintendent until she became a superintendent. Um, and so just kind of balance that out. But I also, um, question why somebody who was a sitting superintendent is leaving their district, um, as opposed to, you know, staying there. You know, I, I don't know that we're, we're not offering a lot more money or, you know, anything like that. So, you know, I just.
Challenge.
It's just a.
Challenge to take your talent.
That I wonder about. And that's not something we were able to ask and I would never know that answer, but that's just something.
And, and in response to you, to the question that you asked tonight, um, McIntyre seems interested to work in a more diverse district. Where, um, McCall and Desmond both come from more diverse districts. And, and Lowell in general is probably the closest match.
Right, has experience.
I mean, Lowell, Lowell is probably the closest match, having worked in the city of Lowell.
Absolutely.
Right.
It's our demographics, our population.
But I think McCall knows a lot about achievement. In Newton, it's, there's a lot of parents that take their education very serious. They're very competitive. They start grooming their kids in the first grade to, you know, look at, this is where school we're going to. These are the things we need to do to get there. And we talk about achievement all the time.
But didn't they, didn't, um, Dean, didn't Newton lose eleven hundred kids in the last two years?
Well, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, they, they lost a lot of kids.
Five to two.
Six.
Six to two. Oh, did you just go with?
All right, I'll go to Desmond.
No, we'll, we'll have.
We're not dragging you across.
We'll have a final vote, Abby. Straw poll.
I, right now, I'm feeling, I don't know, we have a candidate.
Well, you have to vote on one because you can't abstain because.
Well, I'm not abstaining, but, but I could vote for interim, right? That could be, that could.
No, you can't. It's on the floor.
I don't know the size.
No, you're here. So you have to vote.
Okay, so if I didn't feel that we have a superintendent candidate, what is my vote?
You'd vote on the best candidate that we had before us tonight.
Okay, if that's, if that's what I have to do, then I, I would vote for, um, Ms. Desmond.
So to make it unified, um, we'll take the final vote. All right. I'll start off with Ms. Robin Desmond. All in favor? Okay, so it's unanimous.
So if he would.
No, I know, I didn't see him raise his hand. That's why I was asking.
I mean, he didn't go like this, he didn't say something. Well, then, then I, that was my vote.
You don't have a conflict. I mean, you have to vote this.
Mr. Chair, if you would.
Yeah.
He's not on here. She's not on here.
Okay, so, so you're telling me I have to vote for somebody? I voted for somebody.
I believe you do, unless you have a conflict of some sort.
I don't have a conflict.
I, I was going to say, Mr. Chair, if you wanted to take a brief recess, I'd be glad to call Ms. Desmond and come back with at least a, a provisional answer pending contract negotiations, if you would like that.
Well, let me, she understands what the parameters are of the parameters. I know, but I've had so many people come back on me later as if we didn't publish it.
Publish the parameters. Yes.
And, and the other thing is I think genuinely all three really wanted to come to work here. And that's a, that's a real compliment to the system here. It wasn't just about moving up or moving around or more money. They actually like genuinely wanted to come to work here. Like this is a good place to work. It's the right size. It's the right this, it's the right that. And, um, you know, it's not like, even on social media, people don't complain too much about the schools and that's unusual because. Well, that comes with the turf, with the high pay. All right, you want to go ahead?
You would like to do that?
We don't even have to recess. We can just wait.
Okay.
That way we can't get sidetracked. Followed by, you know, sidetracked.
I think she's a good choice.
I've seen Desmond.
Uh, so Mr. Chair, Ms. Desmond, I would be happy to enter into contract negotiations with you. And she's very, very excited about becoming the next superintendent here.
And thank you, Tracy. Again, I know we said it at the beginning, but thank you.
Thank you.
Been here till like ten, eleven today.
Well, you got, you were very, as per always, Mr. Chair, you were very efficient.
I thought we have three, three and three. Really? That's what I thought. We're gonna have like three, three.
So the, you are, you are not posted for negotiations this evening, but the next thing that you will want to start to make plans for is who is going to handle negotiations and how. And I'm just putting that out there on the table in terms of that. That's something that we're happy to give you information and background and anything else you need on that as you move forward.
I accept that nomination.
And, and Tyler, it was a pleasure to have you on the school committee with us. It was really helpful.
Not only did Tyler participate in school committee meetings this year, he also was hugely involved in this whole search process.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Yes, he was part of the screening committee as well.
And brought valuable, valuable insight from the student population that we probably wouldn't have thought of.
Yeah, nice show. Can use us for your references. First job. Yeah, I feel bad because we have really good candidates.
Lucky for you, I'm the one who has to make those phone calls, not you.
No, but I mean, you do a lot of researches.
I do. No, and I.
That often and people are like, no.
No, I, I would not be saying you have three excellent candidates if you didn't have three excellent candidates. And, and to be fair, as you've mentioned at the screening committee a couple of times, that is also due to their work as well, that they did a good job in terms of sorting who they wanted to bring for initial interviews and then actually making the selection that they did.
And thank you to the full committee. We've had that original committee, you know, they showed up several nights and the weather wasn't always great. Had to cancel one or move one and, but thank you to them, so. And, and now the thing is to sort of establish that relationship and ease their way in. But, you know, we also, it's also opportune time for us to sit down and talk about where we see the system going with a new superintendent.
I'll finally be able to ask her my question.
What was it? Yeah.
All right, what was it? The third grade, third grade learning. It says right here, chief academic officer, officer.
And who's the big promoter of that?
We've been talking about it for fifteen years now.
Been talking about it for twenty years.
The question was, what will she do? What can she do? What does she perceive that has to be done regarding?
We're gonna talk to her about that. Yeah.
You didn't listen to the TV, did you? And you didn't see in the papers. That's where the focus is. You got time. You used to busy retired, third grade reading. All right, thank you. Third, third grade, no, third grade readings where it all starts.
Don't tell me that's superstition.
I know, but. I, I agree. Here, Tracy, you wanted these things.